Okay.
You're starting early?
No, it's seven o'clock. For this regular meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School District, School Board Meeting, please come to over. Will you join us in the presence of leaders, please?
The leaders to the flag of United States of America and to the three public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're starting with public comments, or are we starting with adjustments to the agenda?
I would like to make, if you could, I would like to make, in addition to tonight's agenda, we had a request for an overnight field trip that came in after the agenda was issued, so I'd like to add that. It's a request from the high school from the robotics team, and Mr. Allen is here to address that request.
And will that be an action item, under action items?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now we have public comments, please.
No, another adjustment.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda. Madam Chair, a discussion of the superintendent transition and any necessary actions pertinent to that discussion.
Tonight?
Yes, while Dr. Morse is here.
Okay. Any objections to that? Superintendent's transition.
Do we have to second it?
Oh, I'll second it. Do we have to have motions on adjustments?
Yes, should be.
Okay. All those in favor? That was unanimous? Any more adjustments to the agenda? Public comment.
Hi, I'm Kenny Rotner from Durham, and wanted to comment about public comments. And I think it's very good that the public comments come before the meeting, before anything is discussed, because I think that gives the public a chance to have input. But I do think that that second public comment at the end is also very important. A lot transpires at the meeting, and I think that's a way for people who take the time to come to the meeting to talk to the board, to let the board know how they feel. It's a way to connect with the community. And for many reasons, the election, people won the election for the reasons they did, but I think one of them was accountability and listening to the public. And I think there was a sentiment that there was not the public voice being heard by the actions taken by the board. And I think it'd be a mistake to cut out that input that the public could have. If things aren't controversial, it won't take much time for public comments. And if things are controversial, then I think it's really important for the board to take the time to hear what the public is concerned about. So I would love to hear the board discuss that. I spoke at a town council meeting for the first time a week ago about an issue that wasn't on the agenda, and it was very refreshing. They actually talked to me about the issue, and discussed it, and talked about what they might do about it. And I understand there are many times that that might not be a good idea to do, but to leave that open as well, it was, I was concerned about something, and it showed that they were engaged as well. So I would move in the other direction. I think public input is very important, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, then we'll move to preliminary action items. Superintendent's.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Dr. James Morse. Dr. Morse has been in the district for a few days here. He attended an activity, Pancake Saturday, at Mohermit, and Monday night was present for the Peter Pan production, and spent yesterday afternoon with my leadership team, talking about the district, where we're headed, and trying to lay out a transition. And he has volunteered to make, introduce himself to the board tonight, make some opening comments. So, Dr. Morse, welcome.
Well, thank you very much for the invitation. I am five pounds heavier, thanks to the pancake breakfast. And I was overjoyed, quite honestly, to hear the middle school band and see the dancers at the breakfast. The middle school band is truly phenomenal. What a asset the district has there. I'm looking forward to the dog show. Who positioned me for that event? And also the high school musical. So that, those are coming up. I have to say that I was very impressed with the leadership team yesterday. Very enthusiastic and very committed individuals who want nothing but the best for the Oyster River students. And clearly, you know, that fits my personality, because everything that I tend to do is driven by whether it's good for students. And that's important to me. And I left yesterday really reassured that you have a leadership team that cares about the youngsters. And I think that Lee has done a phenomenal job holding the fort as an interim superintendent. I've known Lee for the better part of my career. Not as long as he has been a superintendent, though. He's been a superintendent for over 40 years. I've only known him probably for 25. And I have found him to be an incredible person and superintendent in Maine, and obviously he's done a great job for all of you. So I look forward to serving you as superintendent of the schools, and thank you so much for your trust and faith in me and offering me the position. Beyond that, I have very little more to say, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nominations before you for an English teacher at the high school. We have a grade-five teacher at the middle school. There are numerous volunteer coaches, and there is a stipend music director at the elementary level. I have those nominate, I present those nominations to you.
Make a motion to approve the Oyster River High School English teaching.
Moved by Krista, second by Alan. Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please?
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Lee, can you tell us, do we know about any retirements that are planned or anything like that, that it might affect staffing, or how this position is with our projected enrollment numbers? How, if it affects it at all?
All I can say is that the English teacher is replacing someone who didn't return, because she's pursuing studies. And in speaking with Todd, a position's still needed with the enrollment that has just been completed, students requesting courses, and the specialty that that person is responsible for. The grade-five teacher is a person that's replacing Mr. Sullivan, who was a grade-five teacher at the middle school, and is now the assistant principal, and that position is needed as well.
All right. May I ask a follow-up question about the high school English teacher? Is that person going to be teaching a journalism class? Is that?
I believe that's just one of the areas, along with video, works with a teacher here in this room, Young.
Ms. Young.
Thank you. Anne?
I actually had a similar concern to what Megan just voiced, having really no impact on my support of hiring these two individuals, or three individuals. However, I hope that before we move ahead with any additional hiring in the district, that we do look very closely at where our needs are, where our resources are, so that we do that in a thoughtful way as we move forward with a potential decline in the children that we serve.
I'll just add, those concerns I share, and I believe my administrative team shares, and we're fully aware. And that's why I believe in May, sometime in May, we'll be asking the board to set its budget goal early this year. As we look ahead, we know that there's some difficult decisions and some work ahead, and we're not at the point where we're going to be presenting new programs or positions that we feel enrollment does not necessitate.
Are we ready for a vote? Could I have a show of hands, please? All in favor? Approval of the middle school teacher.
The high school.
No, middle school.
Middle school.
Make a motion to approve Sanpreet Sedhana as the grade-five teacher at ORMS.
Second.
Moved by Krista, second by Anne. Discussion? Questions? Oh, Krista.
I'd just like to say that I am so happy that we finally found a permanent spot for Mr. Sedhana. He's been in a temporary position for several. Two years, three years now? And every year we worry that, where are we going to put him? But I'm very happy that we've found a spot for him that's permanent, and that he fits well in, and that's great.
Thank you.
I'd just also add, both of these teachers, I personally interviewed as well, and they're valuable assets to your staff. They just come with such a wide range of experience and talent and really enthusiasm for the classroom. And it's great for us to acquire them, and they, and you need to know that they're being recommended because they competed, they're not, they're being recommended and they competed against other applicants. There are 80 applicants for some of these positions, so they were not just automatically given the position. They were interviewed, and the final interview occurred in May.
Are we ready for a vote? Please show your hands. Thank you, seven in the affirmative. Approval of high school volunteer coaches.
I make a motion to accept the approval of the ORHS volunteer coaches.
Moved by Anne, second by Alan. Questions, comments? Could I have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative.
Can I just make a comment? That this format is fantastic. It gives us a lot of information, so thank you, Corey. This is great.
Approval of elementary music director. Moved by Alan.
Second.
Second by Tom. Discussion, questions? Megan?
I had a question. Is this, this is an ongoing position, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
It's similar to yearly presenting your coaches. It's a stipend position, and so normally if a person does an acceptable performance on evaluations, you will find that name come forth for you for the following year as well.
Anne?
Is it a full-time position?
No, it's a stipend.
It's a stipend? And what does, what are the duties?
They oversee the music program or the elementary coordinate program.
So it's not just the band and things like that? This is a different position?
Anne?
I actually have a question on the last nomination, if it's possible for me to ask Mr. Parker a question.
Not while we have a motion.
Okay.
Are we ready for a vote? Show your hands, please. Seven in the affirmative. You have a question.
Thank you. Mr. Parker. I'm wondering when, when the window of time is that you will be submitting coaches for the fall season? Roughly when I expect that? If you know, sorry.
To be honest with you, I typically would do that in the end of this school year. If the board requests that earlier, I'll be happy to provide that to you guys at any date you desire.
No, I just, I had, I mentioned to you three months ago when you first arrived, that there's quite an interest in a ninth-grade girls.
Correct.
So I'm just.
We actually were.
Continue with people approaching me on that subject, so.
Yeah, we are actually taking numbers over at the middle school this week for girls interested in meeting with the high school coaches to reassess our staffing structure.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Announcements, district announcements.
Jay Rashad, principal at the middle school. Just a couple of brief ones. First, I'd like to thank Armita Geiger and Mrs. Kate McGregor. They actually run our chess club. This past weekend, we actually had three students play at the New Hampshire Chess Championship. We're fortunate, one student, Arthur Tang, he is actually the New Hampshire champion, and he will go on to the next tournament representing the state. Ethan McGregor, ours, had a, was medaled, I believe, that's what they call it, for the middle school slash junior high. And Connor McLaughlin, he was actually the co-champion for elementary schools, Y elementary schools. He's in sixth grade, so I believe the classes are seventh and eighth grade. Real quick, I'm starting to do my tours for incoming fifth-grade students. Last week, I was actually at the Mohermit School and answered any kind of question parents might have about the transition. Tomorrow night at seven o'clock, I'll be at the Masway School. Tough questions are welcome, so Masway parents, I hope to see you there if you have a transitioning student. And lastly, in terms of feedback, I know Superintendent Lebec and I have been talking about gathering feedback from students. My eighth-grade guidance council, kind of similar to the last report I did on private schools, our plan is to survey every single eighth grader to talk about their middle school experience and get feedback on that. To jump back to the transitions, a couple of things that we do for transitions. Again, I meet with the parents. I'll do the exact same type of meeting with the students, so I'll go over and meet with the Mohermit students so they can ask me questions, as well as the Masway students. As you've heard me state before, we do a step-up day, the last day of school, so the fourth graders come over to spend some time at the middle school. And over the summer, we actually have something that we started just a couple of years back. We call it the fifth-grade picnic, where we invite all the parents and students to come over to the middle school in August and just have a celebration in terms of coming to the middle school in a couple of weeks. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Alan, from the high school. I actually just want to start out by just recognizing some of our students for some of the exceptional things that they've done in the recent past. We had four juniors who have been recognized for their excellent performance on the PSATs, and they are eligible as finalists for the National Merit Scholar Program. One of them is sitting right here with you.
All right.
In addition to John, we also have John Meredith, Jalen Sheehan, Sam Lewis, so they did fantastic. So, and just to give you an idea, there are one and a half million kids in the country who take the PSAT, and 50,000 of them get to this point. So it's like being in the, you know, 98th percentile. It's pretty darn good, so they should feel excellent about that. Last weekend, we had two students, Nathaniel Spence and Catherine Geiger, participate in the All-State Music Festival. They're part of a choral group of 142 students that performed, did a fantastic job. So congratulations to them. In addition, I just want, if you didn't check it out, on April 7th, there was an article in Foster's about our new baseball coach, Craig Wallfield, written by one of our students who's doing an internship over there. I, it was actually funny, I got up that morning, I was reading the paper, and wow, this is a great article. And I didn't realize until a couple of days later that one of my students had written. So anyway, just, Andrew Gass did a great job on that. And just on the subject of kudos, the French trip, just got back from Quebec Monday night at about seven o'clock, a four-day trip. From all reports, it was great, but one of the things I really enjoyed hearing was the chaperones said they heard from the bellhop, they heard from the curling coach, and they heard from the tour guide that these were the nicest, best group of kids, I mean, they are all independent. And I, I've been working with Oyster River kids for a long time, and I've been in the situation where having, visiting coaches, other people have those comments. Oyster River kids always just are exceptional when they get out in situations like that. Really a lot for us to be proud of. And just one last thing I'll mention, if you get a chance, this, I believe, exhibition is up right now in the multipurpose room. It'll be open, it was open Tuesday, Wednesday, and it'll be open all day tomorrow until five o'clock. But it's a collection of essays, art projects, and video projects, all focused around the core values of our community. Really great stuff. It's kindergarten through, you know, adult community members. It's kind of neat to go through and read some of the stuff that they write and what they really are passionate about and believe in. And it was really actually, in fact, one of them, a young lady, Alex Grogan, wrote one about just the value of siblings, and it just really blew me away, how important, how much she really valued her brother and sister. So anyway, great stuff, and I'll stop there, because I can go on forever.
Thank you.
In the absence of the high school elementary principals, I want to say, give kudos to Pam Felber and the musical. Peter Pan was just put on by the elementary schools, the third and fourth grade choruses. Masway was Monday, and Mohermit was last night. And if you've never been to one, you need to go, because you will cry with joy to see these kids doing what they are doing. And it gives me chills every time I talk about it. I saw my daughter go through, my daughter did, is a senior this year, did Peter Pan, and I know that John Parsons was Captain Hook along with his cousin at the same time my daughter was. So, you know, Aunt and I were just waxing sentimental and all that kind of stuff. It's just amazing what this, so that needed to be mentioned, so thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, we missed to thank Mark Nichols, our eighth-grade social studies teacher, has done a huge amount of work behind the scenes, because actually at this time, next Wednesday, we will be on the trip back from Washington, D.C. with 93 eighth-grade students for the first time. So I wanted to make sure I gave a special thanks to Mark and his efforts for planning this trip for our kids.
Anybody else? Moving right along. Correspondents.
Okay.
I wanted to respond to two letters. One was thanking Krista for being our rep to the New Hampshire School Board Association and keeping up with advocacy for the, what do you call them?
Legislation.
Yeah, with the legislation, which is a hard job to do, in supporting what this board accepted their resolutions. So, thank you. The other one is from Stephanie Adams, who wrote us about, what are we going to do with the $15,000 that was voted for somebody to figure out trust in the system? And all I can say at this point is, with turnover of among the administration, interim superintendent, other issues, this has not been done. And maybe we should have it on as a discussion item next, next meeting. I'm hoping that the strategic plan process might bring some trust. Trust is a hard thing. We're good at spreading information, we're good at listening, but it's the conversations that are very hard to, to find a forum for. And I think it's through conversations that we gain trust. And if anybody out in TV land has ideas about how to, to do, how to structure those conversations, please let me know. And we'll discuss further next time about how to spend money. Tom?
Okay, other letters, there's a letter April 4th praising the work of the District Wellness Committee. April 10th, there's a letter announcing what Todd just mentioned, this, I believe, event that's taking place now through Friday. And on April 14th, there's a letter expressing concern about the evaluation of the current superintendent and the use of standard New Hampshire School Board Association language and the policies.
Thank you. Commendations. Krista?
Well, at the risk of repeating, I always have to commend Pam Felber after the third and fourth grade musical. It always amazes me that she can take that many third and fourth graders and put them in on one stage and have such a beautiful musical produced. I can't even get my three kids to sing anything together, so it totally amazes me. The musical was amazing. The kids did a phenomenal job, and they all deserve a commendation, because it was just fantastic. And I was reminded today that it is National Volunteer Week, so in that light, I will commend all the volunteers for our district, of which there are probably thousands. Every time I go into the school, I see another volunteer. So thank you to all of our volunteers, because this school district would not run without you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Megan?
I have to commend Pam, too. This was the first year that one of my children participated, and I, this morning at Mohermit, we had a cast party breakfast that was really amazing, because it really put into perspective how many children, as they waited in line to get their food, I mean, there was 120 children, and that's a third, almost a third of the students at Mohermit are involved in this. And it's phenomenal, not that only she did it for just Mohermit, but for two schools, back to back. It's, it's mind-blowing. She should write a book about how she does this. But the thing is, the quality of the performance was so remarkable. The children, they're, you know, they spoke, they projected, they sang well, they, they learned so many lessons about musicality, and I just, I think it's one of the most wonderful things we have to offer in our district. So thank you, Pam, and everyone who's supported Pam.
Thank you. Tom?
I'd just like to commend Dennis Harrington and everyone involved with the pancake breakfast, which is much more than a pancake breakfast, it's just this great celebration of spring, I thought, that just brought so many people together, it's just a great, great event.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Actually.
Yes?
I have to tail on to Tom, that the pancake breakfast is, Dennis owns it, however, he, it wouldn't happen without his trusty PTO.
Yeah, I know, I know.
They are the, the little, the people under the tablecloset get it all done.
Thank you. Approval of minutes for 412.
I have one correction.
Yes?
I was here. I have a memory of that. So, board member, Tom Merrick, it should be Tom Newkirk.
I also have a correction on page 11, second from the bottom. Mr. Bevington noted that last minute, the board violated the right to know law. I thought he said that we might not have violated the right to know law, but we should go for a higher standard.
Correct.
So we didn't violate, yes?
Didn't he say he personally believes we violated the right to know law? Is that the word he used?
I don't know.
How do I get to the exact one?
If that's a recollection, I'll go with that. That was his interpretation that we violated. But he also said that the law was just the minimum, and therefore we should do, move to a higher standard. Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept with those corrections?
Make a motion, approve the four minutes.
Moved by Alan, second by Krista. Comment, more comments? Because we have a show of hands. Seven in the affirmative. Approval of the manifests we have done.
Done.
Reports, curriculum and instruction reports. Superintendent's report.
Just a couple of comments. One, you may have seen on our website that the New Hampshire School Transportation Association did issue a special commendation to Oyster River for having 100% of its bus fleet pass the motor vehicle inspection, pupil transportation inspection. bus fleet pass the motor vehicle inspection, pupil transportation inspection. And it's Division Two, which is between a fleet of twenty-five to forty-nine buses. So, I think, and it was the only school system with that fleet, considering the age of our fleet, it certainly speaks well for our whole bus transportation system employees as well as the John's Auto Transportation that takes care of our buses. The other comment I would make is just draw your attention that earlier this year, you approved a trip for students of the high school to go to Russia. And there was a memo in your packet I included from Principal Allen stating that because of some visa difficulties, that they had to postpone or delay the trip to get everything straightened out. So, the trip will take place instead of April 11th to the 26th, April 23 to May 9. And I believe they'll be missing school several number of days, but it's a change in the date. You've already approved it, and I'm just advising you that it's just a shift in the date because of some visa clarifications that they had to make sure they were in place. It's all explained in the letter to you. Those are my two announcements.
Great. And other reports. Business administrator, Aramark, contract update.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our new facilities manager. Aramark has made a decision to change our management within the district. And we have Brian Cherry, who's joined us. Brian, would you like to come up and tell the board a little bit about your background?
Brian Cherry, Director of Facilities here with Aramark Facility Services. I want to start by thanking Lee and Sue for giving me the opportunity to take control here and really get our facility services back on track. We're in week two now, and I've already identified some areas for improvement, both in our operations, you know, policies, procedures, and our sustainability goals. I've been part of different facilities in the past where I've rebuilt the programs from the ground up, and I intend on getting the district back on track in short order. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Oyster River High School Athletic Winter Recap.
Good evening, board members. This winter was a joy for myself, starting in last week of September. This was actually my first full season to be a part of the program here. So it was, it was a true joy to be, seeing the evolving of all our programs, starting with tryouts and how many kids come out for tryouts, moving forward within actual regular season play and then postponed, excuse me, postseason play, and then certainly the end of the year banquet. So, thoroughly enjoyed that. And certainly, if you have any questions as we go along, feel free to ask as we go per each team. As you can see here, there's three pictures of our teams going counterclockwise. Starting in the top left corner was our boys reserve team, boys junior varsity at one o'clock, and then varsity at six o'clock. The program this year, I think, took great steps forward. We only had three seniors involved in the entire program, and we had a great wealth of distribution of age across the board. So a lot of kids were able to participate and really gain valuable experience. I would say highlighted with our junior varsity team finishing twenty and two and captured the JV tournament championships here in school. And due to one snow cancellation, another cancellation from another school, they actually won five games in five days, which even though these boys have a lot of energy, I commend them on being able to accomplish that and beat Portsmouth in overtime, also an extra period in winning the championship. Again, for the varsity outlook, looking forward, they returned ten players of their thirteen this year on the varsity roster. So I know there's high helps for those boys in the offseason moving forward. Girls' basketball was in a similar scenario. The junior varsity team, we actually welcomed five girls new to the game of basketball completely. So we were happy to have them on board. And to see them really evolve from Thanksgiving to February was true joy, not only just skills, but learning the actual game of basketball. So I know, I commend the coaches for really balancing the skill set and experience level moving throughout the season. On the varsity team, we finished runner-up in our own holiday tournament, losing to Hanover in the finals, and earned a playoff spot again this year, winning two of their last three games to qualify for the playoffs. Senior Izzy Coram was named to the All WTSN Tournament Team that takes into account all the Seacoast teams, so it was a tremendous honor for her. And certainly, the coaches are excited to be returning nine of their eleven. They're sad to see Izzy and Riley go who are in the top right corner as they were true leaders this year as seniors, but excited for the nine to be returning next year. One new thing this year that NHIA took on, and truly one, in my opinion, one of our largest accomplishments in the winter, was unified basketball. Special Olympics and the NHIA, which is the New Hampshire Interscolactic Athletic Association team this year, to make unified sports. In the fall, there was four teams participating in unified soccer. We were one of them, along with Spalding, Dover, and Laconia. In unified basketball, they jumped the number up to nineteen across the state, which is wonderful to really bolster unified sports within each high school. Here at school, we had seven unified partners, whether they're from eighth grade through high school participating. There's a handful of photos during one of our games here at school. And the really great part is we had thirteen unified partners participating with them. And it truly was a great experience for both, for our unified athletes and our unified partners, to participate with this team. Moving forward, we also have unified track in the spring. So it's a great initiative that the state's picked up, and I credit the students and coaches here at Oyster River to jump on board with unified. Yes?
Is it boys and girls?
It is, yes, it's going. Our Alpine Ski Team had another very successful year. We had forty-five members this year, which in talking with the coaches, was eight more than what we've ever had. It's a great program where the coaches do a wonderful job of balancing experience levels. And with some of our skiers who have a lot of experience in actually racing type environments, and on the flip side, we have a lot of students that just enjoy skiing and kind of want to get better at it. And so this year, with one of our coaches, we directed them specifically as a developmental coach, and really kind of focusing on getting out of the blocks and working on your turns. On the flip side, Jake Jacobson, our head coach, was really kind of honing in on our top eight, twelve skiers to really focus on their skills for competition. And it certainly paid off. The boys finished sixth in Division Three, the girls finished fourth. Freshman Liam Warwick finished fourteenth overall, which combines your slalom and your giant slalom times. And then Junior Molly McQuade finished thirteenth overall. And certainly, we had a lot of Oyster River names in the top twenty-five, so it was joy to them. And I want to thank Mr. Allen for coming out to Gunstock on one of the days, and I know it was a treat to see the, the girls and boys were certainly shocked when they saw Mr. Allen out there, not going up a lift and skiing on his own, but actually supporting himself. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Similar to the ski team, indoor track this year had the most kids ever. Credit Greg Gethardt and Nick Ricciardi to really bolster the indoor track program and encourage kids to really buy into track, starting with cross country, moving to indoor, and then outdoor season in the spring. And it certainly has paid off and paid dividends with their staple and being key components across the state. The boys finished second overall to South Eagan at state championships. Girls finished ninth overall. And we certainly had two standout student athletes, senior Natalie Belinski, Tracy Belinski's daughter, our teacher here at school. She was state champion in the fifty-five meter race and was voted indoor track athlete of the year for Foster's, which again takes into account all the local high schools, which is tremendous honor when you consider some of the enrollment sizes of a lot of the local schools. And Ethan Druskit was also a state champ in the fifty-five and also the three-hundred meter race, and was also voted track athlete of the year. Boys hockey this season finished with a twelve and eight record. It's a unique group of individuals. Moving back to New Hampshire, I kind of fell back in love with high school hockey as we didn't have that in Ohio, but it's a true bond within the team, and it has that sense of family and community within the locker room, if you will. They finished twelve and eight and reached the state semifinals, losing to the eventual state champion Bedford in the semifinals. Senior Ryan Bishop was first team All-State recognized for Division Two, and Owen Allen was recognized, honorable mention, All-State. And when I talked to the coaches, he wanted me to reach out and just thank the five outgoing seniors for their true leadership. Ryan Bishop, Owen Allen, Sam Smith, Nick Smith, and Tommy Dagel. Girls hockey also reached the state semifinals for the fourth straight year, losing to Hanover in the semifinals game. They finished the season at thirteen and five. This is, and when I spoke at their banquet, truly dive into the elements. Their, majority of their practices and games are at Jackson's Landing, and they had a few Saturday night games this year. Although there wasn't snow on the ground, it was very cold, needless to say, for fans and for the girls. So I commend them on their true work ethic and commitment to the hockey program. Sophomore Sandra Strojan was voted first team All-State for Division, well, the only division in girls hockey, and senior Marissa Biederman was voted second team All-State. Marissa actually, just over the new year, eclipsed a hundred points for her career. She's the only second girl in Oyster River history and the eighth overall hockey player to do so. To really do that, you must play four years, significant minutes, and be a true staple on the team. So I commend Marissa for that. And she'll be moving on and playing at New England College next year as they start hockey program. Swimming and diving certainly had another banner year this year. They, in talking with Bill Reeves, he did want me to mention that we host three of the largest swim meets in the state throughout the year, really representing Oyster River, and wanted to thank all the parents and the swimmers for their involvement with that, to run a swim meet. Ms. Lane, you certainly know a lot about that. To run a swim meet, it takes a tremendous amount of volunteerism and logistics behind it. And certainly, Bill Reeves is very good at both of those. However, he cannot do it alone. And I want to commend all the parents and the swimmers to really increase that. Yes?
Kenny Rotner and Tracy Schrader are here, and they have organized the team's volunteer contingent for four straight years. So if we could give them a...
Not only having extreme success, we actually broke a state record in the two-hundred medley relay this year with Joel Bates, Alex Jones, Joe Lane, and Parker Eastman. Certainly, it was a banner year, but now representing the state with a record is a thrill that I know the boys were extremely excited about. Statistically, in swimming, Coach Bill Reeves puts all the records up against each other each year within our swim team. You can do it in the swim programs. And on paper, this was actually our most statistically successful year, if we competed against every other swim team that we ever had here. Which is kind of cool to see on paper. Hard to explain, but kind of cool. Again, just mentioning it, the state championship, this was our fifth straight boys state championship title. Considering the amount of boys we have on our team, it truly is a feat like no other because we don't have many boys, and we're going up against schools with thirty-something boys. And as you can see here, we were state champion in nine different events. Joel Bates in the two-hundred and five-hundred free, Alex Jones in the hundred butterfly, a hundred breaststroke, Joe Lane in the two-hundred individual medley and one-hundred breaststroke, and then the gentleman that I mentioned before in the two-hundred medley relay. The union leader also, at the end of each season, makes All-State teams. And the great thing about this is they don't look at Division One, Division Two, Division Three, they look at every student athlete across the state. So you're going up against thirty-three hundred kids at Pinkerton and Central and the small schools of Kearsars and so on and so forth. And these five individuals were All-State first team, which is truly an honor, considering you're taking into effect every winter's varsity student athlete. So I want to commend Joel Bates and Joe Lane for swimming, Sandra Strojan for hockey, and Natalie Belinski and Ethan Druskit for indoor track. The nuts and bolts of the winter season, as you can see, here's a breakdown of our male and females by grade and participation at any level that we have, whether it be reserved, junior varsity, or varsity. The number is only six more than what we had in the two thousand and ten, eleven school year. However, if you look at it, it's extremely top-heavy in ninth and tenth grade. I'm encouraged that that trend is going to continue in that direction. So I think next year, our participation numbers are just going to continue to grow, which is certainly exciting when you're encouraging participation among our student body. And then the academic success of our winter athletes, in my opinion, certainly a banner year. This breaks down honors, high honors, and highest honors among our student athletes. And the most thing I'm proud of is the seventy percent scored at least honors in the third quarter, which takes into effect, you know, two holiday breaks, and certainly a serious commitment of the student athletes. And showing that seven out of ten are certainly scoring honors is truly an accomplishment they should hold their heads high on, absolutely. And the last piece that we started in the winter that I just wanted to give you guys a brief synopsis of is, we started a leadership academy with the help of Sid Skorano and Linda Nelson, both our girls soccer varsity coaches. What we did was, we encouraged any returning varsity fall athlete who had aspirations of being captain this upcoming fall, if they had interest in, to apply to this. They actually had to write an essay and explain why they wanted to take part in this. And what we're doing through group work and group projects and student-led initiatives is really talking about the core components of what it takes to be a leader. And a lot of times, I think, coaches put a C on someone's jersey and don't really explain to that student athlete what they expect that of that captain to do. And we've met three times now. Most recently, we had Marty Skorano and Coach McDonald from UNH Football come over and talk to the kids. And it's, I know Mr. Allen came to one of the meetings as well. It's really been impressive to see the individuals take ownership and address some concerns they've had on teams that they've been a part of, and really want to change the culture within their team and define what it means to be a leader. And we're hopeful that this takes off, and our plan is to, in the fall, offer it for winter student athletes who aspire to be captains. And then next spring, or excuse me, next winter, do it for spring seasons as well. And talking with a lot of students here at school, it's something they're excited about. So we're, I commend the sixteen students for really diving into it and doing homework that's associated with what we're asking of them, and they're really taking it seriously because I think they really want to represent our school district in a proper way. So I just wanted to give you guys a little heads up about that. That concludes my presentation. The last thing, just looking at the spring, the most valuable player in the spring so far has been Mother Nature. The first day of the spring tryout season, there was no snow on the ground, and I want to say it was sixty degrees, and all our teams were going outside. And, you know, I was taking all the credit for it, talking to Todd. Having said that, all our teams are in full action. All our athletic schedules are posted on our athletic webpage to the community and yourself. If you are planning on going out and it looks cloudy, I do encourage you to check our athletic hotline for up-to-the-minute changes that come on throughout the year. And again, fortunately, when I set that thing at six AM every morning, I haven't had to change much of it. So, so far it's been wonderful in that regard, and I look forward to seeing you all in the spring. Does anyone have any questions?
I noticed attendance at basketball games towards the end of the season was starting to become disappointing. And the one lacrosse game I went to, the attendance was also kind of disappointing. There seemed like there was many Bedford kids at the game I went to as there were Oyster River kids. So I'm wondering if you have any plans to kind of bolster attendance a little bit, maybe so we can give our teams more support?
Absolutely. Working with the Athletic Council currently and identifying spirit days within each spring sports team. One tricky thing, good and bad, if you will, is with our spring sports, everyone practices at the same time because we're fighting daylight. So it's difficult if you're on the track team or the men's volleyball team to get out to a lacrosse game because your practice is going on at the same time. To answer that, like I said, we're trying to identify games for each sport to really kind of encourage people to come out for that day. I think as the weather continues to improve, the crowds will get larger for a lot of our spring sports. I'm hopeful that they are. I know last Friday when we played Saint Xavier, or excuse me, Saint Thomas for softball and baseball, we had pretty large crowds for both games, so I was excited about that. It helped, it was seventy-two and sunny that day. To answer your basketball question, that is something I've talked about with some of the student athletes and kind of picking their brain as to why they weren't coming later in the season. And I'm hopeful that we can certainly change that moving forward because I think student bodies at the game is an important piece of the experience.
Thank you.
Yes?
My question is, so it looked like a bunch of your teams had record numbers of kids. Are you, can you accommodate more? Are you reaching your natural cap?
I think we can accommodate more, to be completely honest. We have an outstanding amount of volunteer coaches and some community members that want to be there to... to be there to assist. We almost ran into that with boys lacrosse. We had a boys lacrosse meeting and seventy-two kids expressed interest in playing lacrosse. In working with Nick Skedary and Mike Gomash with ORYA, we're starting to identify a reserve coach in which Tim Nichols and I had a lot of great conversations, and he was very interested in doing it. As we got closer to the season, the number started to taper off to a number of forty-nine, where it was manageable within our two programs. But ORYA has been wonderful in that regard as a resource, reaching to me personally to identify individuals. And like I said, going with our preseason meetings, which typically start about five or six weeks prior to season's beginning, to gauge interest levels is when we start that process. The logistical piece of scheduling games is truthfully the easier part because there's so many schools in the area that have larger schools like in Exeter or Winnicott with reserve teams that can always look for additional games at those levels.
Would a pep band or a cheer squad help?
Well, I know pep band is something we have spoken about with Mark La Force, and that is something, he's already got the basketball schedule for next year, and we're certainly identifying that as a wonderful outlet. And certainly, I think that would be a great piece to have, certainly for a basketball game as well. I don't, we haven't really dived into the fall, about doing it for fall, but certainly for basketball games, I think that's certainly appropriate.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I'd just comment that when Cory interviewed for the position, he promised to bring enthusiasm, good communication, and organization. And I can certainly, from my perspective, attest that he's done that, and we're extremely pleased with the work that he's doing and the eagerness that he approaches his job.
Thank you.
The Wellness Committee report.
If I could just give a, I believe these individuals can give you the historical perspective much better than I, but I do know that they did work with Howard Coulter office, and it's been conversations going on for quite some time. They've been with the leadership team at least twice to review this. And I have included in your distribution this evening the present policy, which I believe is, I don't know if it's two paragraphs or so long. And I was somewhat amazed with this, the length of this one, but I became, I guess, overwhelmed with the enthusiasm and the devotion, and I don't know which one to call it, but you'll see what I mean. In any event, I said, okay, the multi-pages will come to the board, and I surrender. So what you're being asked this evening is to approve the first reading of this policy, and we'll come back next time.
Thank you. My name is Jessie Stabile-Morel, a very nervous resident from Lee, New Hampshire, representing the Wellness Committee. I might be well, but I'm nervous. So we're with Andrea Tran.
Andrea Tran, the Child Nutrition Director for the district.
And Tracy Schrader, the Swimmers at Heron.
So we represent a number of individuals who've been working with the Wellness Committee, District Wellness Committee, for a number of years that are not up here. Many of the school nurses, or all the school nurses, a number of parents, administrators, students that have been working on this over the course of more than a year now. So it represents some, many collective bodies. So we wanted to just give you a little bit of a background. We have been living and breathing wellness policy, but we know some people are coming to this for the first time. One of the, you know, one of our mantras that we kind of had adopted early on was this self-identified goal is striving to become the healthiest school community in New Hampshire. We wanted to really embrace not only some of the things that we're doing well in our district, but perhaps find places where we could improve because we really believe that's such a fundamental component of our students being successful is them being healthy and well. So why do we need a wellness policy? Well, to start off, it is law that every school district in the country has a wellness policy, and that's been since two thousand, well, the law was approved in two thousand and four. Child nutrition reauthorization occurs every four to five years. School lunch programs, breakfast programs are permanently are authorized, but other programs require congressional action to continue. And this is an opportunity to make changes. In two thousand and four, the Reauthorization Act included, for the first time, the establishment or the requirement of local school wellness policies. At that time, it was new, and the guidance and sort of examples were limited. One of the requirements was that the wellness policy existed, there were wellness committees established in every district, and that the wellness policies have goals for nutrition, physical activity, and activities that promote wellness. More recently, in two thousand and ten, the further expansion to this law included that districts include ongoing implementation of their wellness policies, dissemination, and assessments, and also added goals for nutrition promotion to the wellness policy legislation. And then, we know there's many statistics out there, much of this information is things that you've heard before about the incidence or prevalence of overweight obesity that we've seen across our country worldwide, and this is affecting children as well. National statistics are about one-third of U.S. children and adolescents are overweight or obese. We are fortunate in New Hampshire and in our district that the numbers are lower than this, but still using Mohairam and Mastway as examples, we know that approximately one out of every five children are overweight or obese. That represents, from the elementary level, roughly a hundred and forty children. So that's a lot of kids. Even though we are healthier than the national averages, we still have a lot of children who are at risk for developing chronic disease. We know children who are overweight and obese tend to be obese adults. From a school perspective, through success in the classroom, we know children who are overweight and obese miss more school days and are less successful. So it certainly affects lots of different parameters of children's lives. So just to kind of take a step back, and we were presenting to you a draft wellness policy that is a number of pages long, has lots of different components in it, but we thought we'd tell you a little bit of how we got to this point. So the history of the wellness policy in our district began in June, June two thousand and six, when we had the first wellness policy adopted. And this was before my time, before I was involved in the Wellness Committee. But my understanding at that time was that this one-page document that was very, very brief was put kind of on the books and approved during a time, not only, you know, where wellness policies across the nation, you know, still trying to figure out how to make sense of the new legislation, but in our district, we were experiencing significant changes in administration, the loss of our superintendent suddenly and principal. So there were other priorities of our district at that time. So that perhaps speaks to some of why it was a little bit of a limited policy at that time. But it did direct the formation of a Wellness Advisory Committee. And over time, when we started to see a little bit more stability with some administration, the Wellness Committee was formulated at the district level. We did have physician, parents, staff, nurses, administrators on that Wellness Committee. Some of the highlights is that in November two thousand and seven, there was a competitive foods policy adopted that looked at the nutritional quality of foods sold or available to children during the times that our food service program operates. So those are deemed competitive foods because they compete with the school food nutrition program. In two thousand and ten-eleven, so this is last year, I think we got going a little bit more formally, and we started to work on updating the wellness policy, partly due to the more recent legislation that was passed. And we began to really formulate, pulling together lots of policies and look at addressing our policy. It was the draft that you have in front of you first started, really coming to shape in January of two thousand and eleven. We had parents, students, student administration, administrators, parents, community members as part of the policy. We looked at hundreds of policies from around the country, started to look at some of the more recent evidence-based research on which wellness policies were effective, which actually seemed to be benefiting children in districts that was starting to come out. We started to look at some of the different tools that had been developed over the past few years, both, you know, tools available from government agencies, as well as New Hampshire State of Education, the Department of Education had some assessment tools that we utilized. And we also looked at our district and looked at things that were already part of the culture in terms of how to put our policy, our draft, together. We came up with a draft that we started to send out to different groups, and this happened this past fall. And winter is when we sent this out, this art, recent draft out. We presented it at the, gave it to the staff, staffs at the four different schools in our district, had listening sessions, gathered surveys, both paper surveys from staff members. We also made it available via electronic communication to all families in the district and developed a survey, an online survey, to gather feedback. We also presented the wellness policy to the Leadership Committee and met with them to talk about the different aspects of it. We incorporated the feedback that we received. We got, I think, sixty-five electronic surveys back. We were pleased to see that about two-thirds of the people who took the time to respond to the electronic survey, these are family, different stakeholders, different district families and staff members, two-thirds of those that were surveyed either strongly supported the policy or supported the policy. We tried to look at, take a look at the different aspects of different concerns people had and make adjustments and reach out to different people in our district to see places that we could make it a better policy. We're here today to get your feedback, and what we want to talk a little bit about is once this wellness policy is approved, in whatever format it's approved in, talk a little bit about how we foresee the implementation of the policy, as well as how we're planning to continue to assess it and evaluate the policy. The policy, as required by law, has major components for nutrition education, physical activity guidelines, nutritional guidelines for students. It has a section on the school environment, and it has a section on how we plan to implement the policy and review the policy on a regular basis. We also felt it was important to have some explanation and rationale, some evidence-based information and links to other resources embedded in the policy, and also have some resources for how we were going to implement the policy. So that was included. So with that, little introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Andrea Tran to talk a little bit about how we see the wellness policy helping to make our school nutrition program even better.
This wellness policy actually is very timely to present because the nutrition standards for school meals have recently been released last month, which will take effect July first of this year. And it aligns very similar to what you see in the wellness policy. So the new standards that I'll have to follow for next year for the school lunch program are embedded already into the wellness policy that's before you today. They also have recently released a policy regarding the competitive foods that can be sold in schools, which was just released in December, and that also is embedded in this wellness policy. Everything that's in the wellness policy regarding the school food program is something I'm going to have to adhere to next year. It's required by law. We've already tried to implement some of those changes this year to try to get the kids used to it in anticipation of the changes coming for next year, so it won't be such a huge shock for the students and more of a gradual change. So I've already been working on that aspect of it this year.
So how are we going to do this, and what's the impact going to be? And that's yet to be determined, but I honestly feel, at least from Mohairam and talking with my colleagues, that a lot of the stuff that's in this wellness policy, we are already The first order of business is just to establish wellness committees at each of the buildings. We need to get the principals, staff on board, parents and PTO students to sit down and look at the policy and assess where we are and start a conversation. We, like I said, I think in many ways, just listening to Cory Parker, how many kids participate in physical activity, we're already there, but we don't have, we haven't had any really formal structure or policy or procedure to look at where we're at. And that's something that now we need to do because it's law. We have to look, we have to have policies and procedures in place, assess how we're doing, implement where we need to improve, evaluate, are we doing it, and then report that. So we need to get the wellness policies up and running at the buildings. And then, once we get them together, we need to look at the policy. I handed out, this is the state evaluation tool that the state recommends that you use. It's one of the things that we helped formulate our policy because by looking at this, there are some things that are required by law, others are recommended, and by looking at that, we can kind of see, okay, where are we at here? So we have, we actually have a tool and a framework to look at where we're at. So we'll meet as a committee, look at where we're at, say, we're meeting these requirements, we can do maybe better in here, how are we going to do better? And have, start that conversation. Set up some goals, implement some changes if need be, and then assess, and then report to the District Wellness Committee on an annual basis. I guess what we really want to do, and I think the important thing to consider, is that we're here for the kids and that we need to give a consistent and helpful message to our kids. And I think that, you know, I think that's the best thing to do. We're here for the kids, and we want to give a helpful, helpful message. And that's all. Any questions? Or, yeah?
I think that the process you followed is to be commended, that you reached out to every shareholder, stakeholder in our district. I'm curious, how involved were our gym teachers?
They, we had a gym teacher on the Wellness Committee, and then we got feedback, when we were getting feedback, the high school, so that was one of the things that was, the wording was changed a little bit to fit in. So there was, there was a gym teacher on the committee. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know who you...
Actually, for Andrea, so, I mean, actually, I've been struck by your, the policies, school meals really was pretty proactive with the changes. Have you noticed, I mean, you've already started to implement changes in the food service, has it affected the number of kids that are getting lunch? I mean, as it gets healthier, do you think you get less or more?
That's hard to say. Usually, you know, when you start something healthier, you might see the numbers dip a little bit at first. I'm hoping over time, they come back up. And at Mohairam Elementary, this school, I've actually seen it go through the dip and now come back up. So I'm hoping, once I implement this at middle and high school levels for next year, I'll see the same pattern. But it is something to monitor.
I have one more question. Has there ever been a time, like, where the parents get invited to come and try a lunch, like at the elementary school or the middle school?
We encourage it.
Come check it out and try, try with the lunch.
We encourage it. I think it's put in the handbooks that go out at the beginning of the year. Each kitchen manager writes a... Each kitchen manager writes a little letter and always says, you know, we encourage parents and grandparents to stop by at any time and see what school lunch is currently about. And I also wanted to, again, extend an invitation to any of the new board members. If you want to come on our kitchen tour at any time, just give me a call. I'd love to show you, you know, the behind the scenes, how it works, and kind of the nuts and bolts of the operation, so.
Just wish I would believe what Mr. Holland's referring to is that some school systems, we've done it before, is that you sponsor a special day, like grandparent day, and invite grandparents to come eat lunch.
Oh.
And.
That's a neat idea.
Not only do you have a market, but you get to expose the good food and nutrition and use it as a community education component.
That's a good idea.
So you could do things like that throughout, during the course of the year, a couple times a year, and then you're, you're explaining what you're doing with the nutrition, but you're also getting the community into their schools.
Yeah.
It's working very well. Let me stand down.
Can I just add something to that? Just to add to that? Well, I just, quick, because it kind of pertains to this. Today, Mr. Bronley's environmental science class came to Muherram and did lessons for, I think, fourth grade, third and fourth grade on recycling. And when I went into the, somebody said, your daughter is here, because my daughter's in Mr. Bronley's class, and I, he said, where is she? She's in the lunchroom. So I thought, what is she? They were all eating lunch. All the high school students were there eating lunch, which doesn't always happen here. And I actually asked my daughter how it was. She was, actually, it was good. She was, it was, you know, kind of homemade pizza. So, I mean, we had maybe, I don't know, forty, forty high school kids who might not have been eating lunch, but they, and they did it in a curricular thing, and I thought that was a really neat way. And plus, all the, you know, the grade school kids were kind of, you know, I was talking, were coming up and saying, you know, so it was a neat thing, kind of intergenera, not intergenerational, but age thing as well.
And the, the high school students also tried the missed vegetable sample today and got stickers. So they were very good role models for elementary students.
Andrea, I also saw when they were down visiting a middle school on Tuesday and they raved about your broccoli salad.
Oh, that's great. I didn't make it, the staff did.
Megan.
Okay. I have a question. It's kind of a policy question. We have policies given, provided to the school board by the New Hampshire School Board Association. And when I look at our, the required by law policy for wellness, it's different than what's been presented here. And my, my interpretation is that the wellness committee implements this policy. I mean, this policy from the state has an enormous amount of detail about, I mean, it gets into the portion sizing, it gets into a lot of detail. And I wonder, I just want to make sure, number one, are we, are we compliant with the law? Because I'm looking at this and it's different than what we were presented. I want to make sure we're compliant. And then if, in fact, what we need to do is have regulation policies that talk about the implementation, is that, because I think that's.
We did originally have portion size.
But there's a lot of other elements in here. I mean, there, it goes from letters A through.
Be interesting to see what you're looking at.
On, on the New Hampshire School Board Association policy website.
We could look into that to be sure that we are, but my understanding is we're following federal guidelines, that the wellness policy follows that. I don't, I don't know that the New Hampshire School Board Association has a legislation that supersedes the federal guidelines, but we could definitely look into it and make sure.
We have the state statute as well. And they, they typically give us policies that are compliant with the state statutes, and they're codified as P policies. And we usually, what we've done as a rule is have, well, we try to include them in our policy and then we tweak it, because it was always, you know, hopefully will exceed, you know.
We've talked to people at the state and the Department of Education, but I haven't talked to that body, so it's not something I'm familiar with that.
No, I just want, because I'm, I'm actually surprised by how much is on here. Usually it's a lot more terse than what we have. This is a very lengthy document.
Does it say?
And it gets into meal times and scheduling, it talks about a great deal. And I just want to, and it says at the very top, required by law. So I just want to ensure that we are.
Well, that's why I handed this out.
Yeah, and it looks like this.
This, this is the state evaluation tool.
Okay.
But not all of this is required by law, but this is what they recommend. And this is actually what we followed to make sure when we, and one of the reasons ours is so lengthy, is because when we were looking at it, we were saying, okay, are we meeting, are we addressing in this? So we followed, we kind of used this, not as a template, but as a guide to, to make sure that we were touching all, hitting all the bases.
And this is the first read of the policy, so we could definitely review that document, Megan.
But this is from the state.
I mean, I think, I actually like, I know this is old, but I want to make sure that we, this is dramatically different in size, at least in detail.
So what I can say is we reached out to the Department of Edu, New Hampshire Department of Education and talked with them, and we felt comfortable that we were following the law, but I'm not familiar with what you're looking at. So we could look into that more.
I sent the draft to the Department of Education for review, and I believe some of you spoke with the consultant there regarding our policy. And ours does match the samples that the Department of Education has. The New Hampshire School Boards Association usually provides boilerplate samples, and the language may, may not directly apply to us.
Okay.
And I know that they have the specific guidelines and the law. And Andrea has more specific regulations, as she follows school nutrition, that might be in that policy that you're referring to. There are other regulations outside of what's actually written there, the portion size, she follows all of that.
Yeah. I know you do. No, I just, I just was surprised, because I, usually we use this and then we embellish on that, and that's all. I just.
Just make another comment. I mean, when we look at this policy, the biggest shift that will occur is the culture in our schools. And that's why, I think, when we met with the committee and our leadership team, it was advisable to set up committees at each of the schools, because it talks about behavior in schools. What do we do to encourage good behavior around food? It doesn't mean that we eliminate parties or things of that nature, but we're more selective in doing so. And, and so it's an education component, and it's to be approached in a learning, gradual way, not as a hammer-down mandate type of an approach with it. So I think that the goal that they had set to be healthiest is to provide feedback and see how's this working. And schools may choose different goals, because it may be different at different buildings, which is okay. So I just commend the work that these folks have done with such diligence and passion towards the subject. And they, as I said, they've, they've actually addressed these policy and received feedback from all, all the staff at all the schools.
I made a mistake. I was looking at the wrong document, I apologize. It looks like, because it was a big difference, so I'm sorry.
Well, I'd like to thank Megan for at least making sure that we didn't miss something because of all the work you did. And the last thing you'd want is for, you'd start all over again based on something that just slipped through the cracks. But what I, I wanted to address Al's comment. Tracy Schrader, back in 2005, with Dennis Harrington, attempted to take the Muherram Lunch Program and turn it into something that we all could be proud of. And they had days when they introduced new foods that parents were invited to attend and have lunch. And so it's not a novel thing in our district. And again, the lady in the green shirt has been working tirelessly to have our district adopt higher standards, and with the lovely human beings that she's been working with, I think is accomplishing this. Thank you very much for your work.
This is great. Great work.
One other thing I just want to mention is that I think the policy, we really view as a process, and it's something, it's like a living document that we plan to keep looking at. So it's, sort of the process that you go through is more, almost more important. And I think that's something we can tend to, we intend to, this to say that we work on and keep on, keep on.
A small part of me always feels when we're talking wellness, wellness policy, that alcohol and drug abuse be somehow incorporated as part.
That's one thing, when we were doing this, one of the nurses that's not here, Catherine Moore, was saying, this is not a complete policy. This is just a nutrition and physical activity, because that's what's mandated by law. But I agree with you, there's a lot of things that are encompassed in wellness.
So we're working towards getting that all incorporated.
It's, to reach that goal of becoming the healthiest community, school community, it's, it's a work in progress. But, but you're right. I mean, but this is what's required by law, and that's what that is. It's, and that's why we said nutrition and physical activity components, because who knows where we can go? So.
Crystal?
Just so you know, I just forwarded Andrea the New Hampshire School Board Association template, just so that you could have it for future reference. And I wanted to say that I think that this policy is the most highly anticipated policy that has come across the school board since I've been on the board, so I'm very excited to finally see it. I've, it's like.
I'm glad to hear it, I think.
Where's the wellness policy? What's the wellness policy? We've been talking about it for like two years. And I'm so happy to finally see the first draft, and it's fantastic and a lot of work. I know how much work goes into revising policies, and I commend you guys to the nth degree because it's not easy. And you guys have done your due diligence, and congratulations on getting to your first read.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have in our packet the job descriptions for the school physicians.
No action is requested here, but I was asked by the school board to complete the job descriptions for the positions that were recently appointed. So you have before you, and this will be included in the job description packet at our office, you have one for the school physician now, and you have one for the de-cap representative.
Thank you for that work. Moving on to school board committees.
I brought this up at a previous meeting. I think it would be nice for the school board to meet these individuals, or at least have them introduce themselves, the different people we, we appointed.
Okay.
You know, I mean, we may know, I know, I don't know all of them. I know some, but not all, and I'd like to, I think it would be very helpful.
I don't know many.
I don't know many either.
So, good idea. Thank you. School board committees. This is when I appoint people? Have you looked over? Have you decided what you would like to do?
I have a question about committees. I think it's a very fundamental question. I did some research on my own to understand how other districts have committees. And I think there's, one of our board goals that we had was to maybe change the structure of our meetings, have maybe, some meetings be more maybe informational and others more action-oriented.
These meetings?
Yes. And I did some research, and I'm not saying this is the right solution, but I know in my research that the Oyster River District has used this model in many years past, where, for example, we would have committees such as an education committee or academic affairs committee, and perhaps the report that we heard this evening would be presented to the committee, and that, and so, rather than the full board. Or there's a facilities report, and that's given to the operations committee. And then if there's action required, I mean, all these meetings, committee meetings are in public, then the subcommittee could determine whether it needs to be brought to the full board. And so what you would have is a regular board meeting once a month, and then the other meeting probably preceding it would be sort of committee meetings that occur. And that, that's one way, some districts I've, I've seen done it. I'm not sure if that's what we want to do, but, you know, because when I look at some of these committees, I think, well, what is that exactly is the role? You know, a lot of it could be construed as the job of the administration, but if it's more where you're getting information and seeing if there has to be action taken and then presenting that, it gives a little bit more, it puts a little more emphasis on the role of committees, I suppose. But that's something I thought we might want to consider.
I think I lost.
Sorry.
So you would have one meeting for regular business, and the other one would be a meeting of the committees?
So, yeah, so you would probably, I think it would make the most sense is you have two meetings a month. The first meeting of the month would be basically different committees meeting and getting information from the district and figuring out if there's any actions, like for example, the operations committee.
And we'd all be there too.
No, your committees would attend.
And we wouldn't.
Separately?
Separately.
If it was really a big thing, though, a big topic like wellness, would it go on TV or something?
That certainly could, I guess, if we could do whatever we thought was appropriate. I mean, this is how, I think, how you, not saying, I just, I'm trying to understand why, for example, we have operations committee but not academics. I mean, it's sort of, it's, it's not, it doesn't seem consistent to me, and I was trying to understand why and how other districts do it. And, and, you know.
I've been looking at this, wondering, where are the job descriptions for schools?
So, so if, tell me if I understand what you're saying, that the, the purpose or the intent would be to have the committees do their work at the board meeting in public, as opposed to having committee meetings at subsequent times that are still in public, but they're not held in this format?
I don't really have a, any specific about how it would be done, you know, but I think you would have, for example, if you had operations committee, and you, there would be, say, presentation, like the presentation we had our last meeting about all the systems at the high school, that would be presented operations. And then that committee would gather information, or they felt there was something that needs to be presented with the full board, they would do so. Or if there was something the full board felt the operations committee should talk about with various individuals, that would be brought up in subcommittee. It, the subcommittees would become more substantive in some ways. The negative is that, you know, you can't, you may not, this is, I mean, this is broader purview. The board could, you know, we, right now, we get all these reports, we get all this information as a full board. But we still could have it if it was emailed to us, I suppose.
Couldn't, couldn't members of the board still get all the reports? It would just be being presented to the committee so that the information would?
I'm just going back to, you know, I was thinking about our board goal of where we wanted to have more, you know, we don't have workshop meetings, those don't exist, so how could you have work and then, and then, you know?
Action. Leon, do you have experience on this topic?
I'm biting my tongue.
No, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to understand, why do we have certain committees and not? It doesn't, it seems kind of bad hot.
As you know, I've been trying to streamline the committees.
Yeah.
Okay. And what happens at times is that the board invents committees where they feel there is a need for something that they're not receiving. I don't know what the history here is. I don't know why you have an operations, but essentially that came about, I understand, about audits or something of that nature, right?
We've had operations as long as I've been on the board.
And what's the major function of it now? Is to?
Does anybody know what the charge was?
They meet with the audit committee, I mean, with the auditors and.
I might have it.
So. The operations committee, they meet with you and the auditors. So, so essentially it's been more of a financial type of a thing, and looking at bids and things of this nature going about. Communications has come about, I don't know, with special reports, the annual report, communications to go out to the community, and the board feels like they, they have a, need to communicate something. But my experience has been that, you know, this is a relatively small school system. And, and I think in the spirit of openness, if you operate as a committee of the whole, you keep everybody informed. And my experience historically has been that when I have a lot of subcommittees on my board, some have the information, others do not. And it really doesn't bring a group to work well as a team. And I would say if you had a large system and you needed to have these, all these subcommittees at work, it's probably different. But when we're such a small group, it's, I mean, my, my inclination would be to keep everybody equally informed. That's why when we get something, I send it out to everyone, so that when you come to a board meeting and you act as a board member, you all have the same information. And if someone else is to explain it, then there's another redundancy that occurs there. And so that would be just my con and so on.
Okay. So I, I agree. So I agree with what you're saying. I was trying to understand why we have certain committees and not other committees. And, I mean, why don't, I could, I mean, I really, I don't have a propensity to do either thing, but I'm just trying to point out that maybe we shouldn't have some of these committees, and we'll just do it all here. You know, maybe there's a few we need to, but by and large, I just see this kind of, we're either not, either having committees or we're not, you know, and I see this kind of an in-between limbo situation. And I was trying to understand, and I was trying to put it in the context of our board goal.
Well, as I read this here, you only have three committees. The others are represented to other groups. So negotiations you need to have.
Yeah.
And you can appoint communications and operations and have these folks report back and try to define their function, and you have a group to refer something to if the need occurs.
Yes.
I believe, having no history to back up my assumption, but there's a policy VDE that's not a required policy, it's a recommended policy, that says boards may have standing committees that include building and maintenance, include extracurricular policy, finance, audit, transportation, and negotiations. And that comes from the New Hampshire School Board Association as to standing committees that you could have. So whether or not we need them or not is left to our discretion. However, none of those are unusual. The state recognizes these as standing committees for school districts.
I'm at the loss. Krista?
So, the communications committee, correct me if I'm wrong, I've actually not ever served on this communication, that committee, and I'm not asking to either. They help Wendy with the school board newsletter, is that right?
The chair does that.
Oh, okay, so then we don't necessarily have to... Well, my question was if we don't have a communications committee, the communications committee for the last two years, that's all I can speak to, has done an extraordinary amount of work for the board, which I don't necessarily think that if we want to continue down that path, we want to bring that work to the full board, because it'll take forever. And they have done a lot of work as to, you know, reviewing policies and recommending things that, within policies that have, that need to be improved and, from a board standpoint. The negotiations committee, obviously, we have to have it. It's not negotiable. Sorry. That was not on purpose. And the operations committee, we have a discussion almost every year about what the operations committee does. So I don't know whether or not we need it. I have served on the negotiations committee. I know that it's important for continuity, for negotiations. I am now employed full time, so I don't know that that will work for me necessarily, because most negotiations meetings take place during the day. And I don't think I can meet during the day as often as I had to meet during the day for this negotiation. So I'm willing to try, but I don't know that it will necessarily work out for me. And I know that I'm the only member of the board who has served on a negotiations committee in this district. I don't know about you, Mike. But I have served as the New Hampshire School Board Association delegate for two years. I would like to stay as the New Hampshire School Board Association delegate if that is at all possible. So I'll throw that out there. And that's it. That's all I have to say. How about that?
Megan?
I can talk about what the communications committee did this past year. We did a great deal of work. We were charged by the board to do some communications writing. And if you recall, we had gone through a process with a search firm to hire superintendent, and there needed to be a great deal of advertisement created, posters, information, press releases that we drafted and presented and got approval from the board. So there was quite a bit involved. And it was, it was helpful having that committee in place to affect the work that had to be done. I also served on the academic affairs committee, which was disbanded. And, you know, I see that committee having some relevance, too. If we were in a situation where doing curriculum review, understanding a great deal of detail, having another, a committee that could possibly help, it might be helpful. I know other districts do that. I know Exeter, Dresden, they have similar committees. I also think that a policy committee is, policy is at the heart of what we're doing. I think we all have, are feeling a little overwhelmed by the amount of policy we have to review this evening. And I think we should have a policy committee in some instantiation. I think it would be, it would be helpful for the board to have people who can double-check against other, against statutes, educate yourself on what the laws are, you know, work with what is presented to us through the New Hampshire School Board Association. I think what Lee is doing is incredibly helpful, but I think we're going to see that the need for a policy committee is going to probably come forward in the year ahead. And I am interested in being on the policy committee, if it existed.
Just to kind of expedite this process, if possible, can we just kind of go through and say, hey, this is the operations committee, this is what it does, who wants to be on it, raise your hand, you pick them, and we just throw them? Because, I mean, we need to like, cut out stuff or add stuff, but, I mean, you know...
We can do that at another meeting, discuss and add more. If we can get through this. Operations, they meet with you and the auditor, how often? Anybody who would like to meet four times?
That's if we don't charge them with something else.
Listen, I'm going to check this off. We don't have all eight.
Wow, I'll show hands, all right, I'll do it.
Well, I've got, like Krista, I have a time constraint, so I need to, need to be on a committee that meets in the evening.
When does this meet?
During the day.
During the day.
Well, it's flexible. I mean, mainly what it was organized for was the audit, and to meet with the auditors, and then generally here during the day.
Okay.
Okay, Al will do that, since it's during the day, Al will do that. I need one more person. And Tom, see, we're moving on. Communications committee, lots of work.
Start out with that, it's like, who's to sell this?
Who would like to do the two people?
I'll do it. But it won't be meeting during the day, I can tell you that right now. Generally.
Anybody else?
Unless it's Tuesday morning.
Two people.
It's going to be a really easy committee, I can meet whenever I want, my living room.
Negotiations.
I'm sorry, did you get a second for committee?
Maria's going to volunteer.
I'll be on every committee, just to get the score.
Good, we're going to be at Maria's house.
Negotiations. And?
Yes.
Al?
I'll do it.
Who else? Tom?
Sure. What's the number of committees you're supposed to be on?
Twenty.
District tech committee, I only need one person.
I'll do that.
Megan. New Hampshire School Board. Yeah. Unless somebody is fighting for a fourth. Regional vocational advisory.
I'll do that.
And Stafford Learning. And Strategic Planning Committee. Al?
There's usually two, at least two, if not three, on that committee.
Just three.
Yeah.
This is a strategic plan. This is what we're going to do. Right. I'll be on that. Anybody else?
I'll do it.
Who? That's during the day.
Well, sometimes, sometimes not. But...
Are you sure?
Because I know how much work it is. And I love it, but... Oh, my husband's going to kill me.
Yes, no. Going once, going twice.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Sustainability Committee. And Wellness Committee. And Advisory Budget Committee.
I'll do it.
Al. See? Where did it? I saw a point.
I'm sorry, but, so is our plan to discuss the policy committee and potential other committees that are associated?
Yes, have a next attempt, please.
I guess we can do that. My thought would wait, I mean, I would wait to hear how Jim would like to approach it. As you know, when we're done with this, with this piece, I'm going to send it to the New Hampshire School Boards Association, then I'll get a review of the work, and it should be done. And I think you're probably right on. But I would hope that you would have an opportunity to discuss it with Dr. Morris as well. And not that I, I think your point is okay. So if you want to put it off a discussion and make a decision prior, you can, but...
Don't you love policy committees?
Do you want this on the next agenda, or do you want, do you want to wait?
I think, for discussion.
You attended a meeting this week? That's not listed on here, the long-range planning committee, which has a representative from the board, and it's not on this list.
Oh, it should be, yeah, it should be on the list.
That's right, we missed that one, because, yeah.
Good catch.
Long-range planning committee.
Who's, who historically, who has served on that one in the past, you know?
What's the difference in the strategic planning committee and the long-range planning?
Strategic planning will be developing a strategic plan for the district. Long-range planning looks at enrollment projections and local demographics.
Thomas. I saw a point.
Long-range?
Yes. You heard, comment?
Oh, I have like one more. Volunteering for anything.
Comment?
Yeah, comments, yeah, no volunteers anymore. But, I mean, when we talk about the policy committee, and I know we're under time constraint, but it would seem to me to make sense, before we adopt or do anything like that, you're not going to be here at the next meeting, is to wait till you come online in July, and then we can talk about how you did it, and how you're comfortable with it. And then we can adopt it as you see fit.
Is that okay with you?
I'm sorry, to wait till July?
To wait.
I'm fine with waiting till July. I mean, again, I don't know, I think it's pretty clear in my mind, our most, you know, our primary function is policy as a school board. And I think, you know, if this, I think a policy committee can, in my mind, I see how it could affect more efficient policy creation, editing, improvement. And I think it would be an important committee. But I'm fine with waiting. I think we have enough other business until then.
Thank you. Board comments. Student comment?
The Senate is beginning, or actually, receiving a lot of emails back from the over 200 colleges. We sent emails to regarding class rank and their consideration of class rank, and we have not received emails back from all of them. But we will be putting together a report that I will be giving to the board, I think I'll be giving to the board sometime after April break.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, discussion items. And this is purpose, charge of Advisory Budget Committee. Just step right on up.
I wasn't sure how, I mean, I'm Ann Knight, I'm the chair of the ABC. And I welcome our new board delegate, board representative, and Al will be coming to our meetings. But I think, I wasn't sure how you wanted to handle tonight's meeting, and whether you wanted to present what is before you, or you want me to sort of talk about from our perspective first, and then look at what you're proposing here? I'm not sure how you want me to approach this.
Well, since I'm the new kid on the block, and I don't have much of a history, I'd just like to know. And I'm not doing this to criticize or say...
I understand.
Why do we have an advisory budget?
Well, that part I can't tell you. I cannot give the history of that, but I can tell you that we were formed two years ago, at the request of the school board. There was a vote, and they, in essence, looked at the, from what I can understand, the need for broader perspective on how the budget was put together, listening to the administrative team, get a lot of the information, and then to analyze the budget, and ask questions of the administrative team, to eventually maybe look at making recommendations to the school board, in terms of different areas of the budget where either they would like to, they would recommend some changes. So that is, from what I understand, was the purpose of forming the board. And when the board was formed two years ago, we had, I believe, seven members representing the various communities. And our charge was quite broad. And so we've been, over the last two years, trying to firm up that specific charge, so that we're all in agreement as what you expected us to do, and what we were expecting to do. And so we initially started with our original membership, agreeing that we would serve for two years. Probably the first year would be a learning year for us. And then the next year, we'd probably be more in a position to sort of lay the groundwork of being perhaps more directive and helpful to the school board when it came to the analysis of the budget. And so, more recently, we felt that we're nearing the end of our two-year terms. We've had some changeover in the membership of the board since we, the committee since we first met. And so those of us that have been on the Advisory Budget Committee since its formation are nearing the end of our agreed-upon term, rather informally, I must admit, it was agreed upon. And we've had some new members come on in the past year. And so it was time for not only to review again the charge, last summer, the board reviewed the initial charge and adopted a new charge, and was specific in the charge, which is pretty much what you have before you. But the terms with, our composition and the terms with which we serve was loose. And so we were ready to come back to you as the, as we are advising you to sort of help us define what those terms are, so that we'd know what we were dealing with, and you would also know in terms of what our terms of office were. So that is why we made some proposal to the school board, that now you have written some other definitions from what was broadly presented to you as to what we saw would be needed. And that's why it's before you now. And so if we want to do this in a, kind of approaching it with first looking at the purpose and charge, and then looking at the, our terms of office and our representation and the number of members of the committee, we could do it that way.
I guess I have more questions.
Can I just clarify something? Maybe that will help. So I requested this item on the agenda in... Um, so I requested this item on the agenda in March of two thousand and something, two years ago. Two thousand and ten, whatever. So, um, to be added to the agenda for discussion, I wanted to have an Advisory Budget Committee discussion. At that time, we did not have an Advisory Budget Committee, we didn't have any budget committee. We received a lot of input from the district, a lot of input from, um, you know, every level of the district at that time. We, Sue was not our business administrator, we had a budget that, um, the community members were saying was extremely difficult to read, um, that we had, that it was hard for them to understand where the money was going from year to year because we had a period of time where we were constantly switching lines. Like you, you couldn't follow line items from year to year to understand where the money went. So, part of the, um, initial discussion for the Advisory Budget Committee was for us to gain, um, we have an immense amount of resources within this community, and I felt personally that we weren't using those resources to give the board more information about budget items, because there was, there's an extraordinary amount of work that the Budget Advisory Committee does that I don't have time to do. But it provides more insight, statistical insight, um, global insight about our budget and where we're going and where we're spending money. So, um, the reason why the charge is the way it is, the purpose in the charge, is frankly, it's because it's the only thing we could agree on. Um, so that's why I said. And every year, it gets a little bit more narrower. And plus, we were looking, we were trying to convert, to create this Advisory Budget Committee, which we had no idea what it was gonna look like. So, because we'd never had one, well, that's not true, we have had one in our district, probably Marty Goos was on the board, so I don't offend her, but a while ago. And, uh, I think she said it was like nineteen eighty-something, does that sound right?
That sounds about right.
Um, so, and I, I think it was an Advisory Budget Committee at that time as well. But anyway, um, I have been, I have not served on a board without a Budget Advisory Committee, I will make that statement. But they do an extraordinary amount of work for us and provide a great deal of insight for us, and I'm not sure that I would want to sit on a board without an Advisory Budget Committee at this point because they make it easier for us to understand what exactly our budget is coming from, going to.
This is work, that's.
But that's your job, right?
No, he provides the actual numbers. The Advisory Budget Committee is able to do a lot of research for us as to where we stand from other districts and stuff like that, that, you know, our administration isn't, doesn't have to do because they can do it for us. I, uh, that's all I'm gonna say.
Oh.
Okay, well, so my comment on that is, uh, I mean, if, if we were hiring you just as an accountant, then you'd be a lot cheaper, so I'm just happy as an accountant. But your job, the way I see it, is like, not just coming up with a budget, but you're supposed to explain it and sell it to us. We're the first line, um, you know, we're publicly elected, we're representing the communities. When you come up with this budget, you're supposed to explain it to us and say exactly why you've developed this budget, hopefully come up with some like data behind supporting why it did that. So, I, my question is, where do you need help? If we're gonna have an advisory, if, if we have a committee that's supposed to explain the budget, how does it differ from you explaining the budget to me? Because I, I personally want whoever's sitting in the superintendent's seat, if you're proposing a budget, I want to know why and exactly what's behind it. And I want that information to come directly from you and your administrative team.
Uh, I, I think it would behoove the new members of the board perhaps to hear directly from the ABC some of the things that they've brought to the board's attention, not that have been, um, omissions on our superintense part, but that have, uh, issues that have been longstanding in our district, they were able to address, um, in, in a pretty comprehensive way. I, I think, again, best we let them tell us what they, what their value add is to our district versus us making that assumption.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to sort of explain the process, and I think you will be reviewing the budget calendar a little bit before the end of the meeting. And Sue has developed it, but in the, uh, it should be clear, as you look at that, um, calendar, that it starts with a presentation by the superintendent and the team of admin, the administrative team to members of the school board that want to be present or that can be present, as well as to the ABC members. That review is exactly the kind of information now that you're saying, they justify the figures they've come up with, the reasons that it's there, how they arrived at this, and if there are things not in the budget, they also broadly outline why they think other, certain members of the team may be saying they would like to see those things in the budget. And then with successive meetings that the ABC has, they, uh, review with the members of, you know, people from the middle school or from the high school or from the elementary schools, and the various other areas like the instruction areas or special education, um, as to their aspects of the budget. Because the budget has, over the years, been improved in, in terms of how it's organized and how it's been re, being, you know, channeled, you know, the information from year to year. And this has only happened really since Sue's been on board and since we've had the Advisory Budget Committee. So that, um, we go basically, um, rather than the school board maybe necessarily having going directly to them, the ABC has gone through with the administrative team, all the areas of the budget, line by line, areas where there are questions, and they are there to answer our questions. And then from that process, um, taking each area, we've developed at, reported to the school board, our areas where we think there either needs to be, um, more or less in the budget and make our recommendations. Sometimes they may include dollar amounts, sometimes they may include about the budget process that needs to be improved. And, um, and then we produce a final report, which I think today you got the right copy of the one that we produced this year, but you got the one before that too. So now you have two years of our budget reports, those of you that are new members. Tom?
Well, as I read the charge, it almost seems unbounded to me.
Well.
It seems almost unbounded, there's no bound, you know, that's.
No, no bounds.
No bounds to it.
Oh, I want to correct.
I'm sorry. So there's not like a specific area that the board asks you to look into, it seems to me that it's the whole budget. And I'm just curious, what's the process of then deciding? Do you, do you feel an obligation to review everything? Do you set priorities? How would those be set? Does the board set them? I'm just trying to figure out how, how this thing is contained, because there's some, doesn't seem much to contain it in the charge.
Mm-hmm. And that's, I mean, I will not disagree with it, that's the way we felt at the very beginning, it was very broad, and we sort of defined what we felt we could do. And then, uh, when it was re clarified last year, there was more terminology says that we may do this, depending on whether the school board asks us to do particular things, such as the specific analyses into certain areas. Some of these we felt we could do, sometimes we felt as though it wasn't appropriate. Sometimes it was based on what we as members of the committee decided we could handle. So it has been somewhat loose and it is very broad. But such as to serve as a resource to the school board administration on budget issues, if there was something they really needed more in-depth analysis of from various members of the community, then we could do that. But it would be based on the need of the school board at any particular time. Does that answer your question?
So the school board presumably, you know, this may be a naive question, the school board could presumably said, say to the Advisory Budget Committee, these are three areas that we think we really say capital improvement. You know, we've had multiple reports come in, uh, almost, it seemed like they're almost layering over each other. We have a new, uh, budget, you know, audits of the energy, which will kind of, so that to sort that out might be a charge. Just hypothetically. Okay.
One of the things that they did last year is, um, each member of the board took a special topic, and for instance, one, one board, one board member of the ABC took busing and went out and did research in other communities on busing and did an in-depth analysis that, that was useful in, in looking at our system and how it works and if it's working as well as it can and if there are adjustments we should make. That was just one I think we can.
And I think we had also with the support of the interim superintendent, you know, was the, looking into the facility studied. I mean, I think that was perhaps, I, I can't take credit for it for the ABC totally because I think it was joint, that we felt as though it was really necessary because the development of the capital improvement, um, proposals in the prior year's budget were not based on a plan of any kind and on a study. So I think that was perhaps, um, motivation or an impetus that came from within the ABC with the cooperation of the superintendent.
Chris, one more question?
Sure.
That has to do with timing, because it's, again, it seems to me if the charge is so big, the timing, uh, the timing for you to get that work done, then get that advice to us so that we could act, and the budget has to be out there by January, right? So I mean, you know, I'm just wondering, in, in the report, I think we saw had a date of December.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, so I mean, if something would come in with a real number of recommendations, how that could possibly be processed by the board so that that could be in a budget that's gonna come out maybe three weeks later? It seems, it seems like there's a problem with timing here, am I, I mean, I'm.
You're not wrong. It is, it's a very, very concentrated period of time, and I think, um, Leon can probably attest to this, there were points when we were still in the process of reviewing the various areas of the budget, when he was saying, you know, are there some areas that you really see near the need for changes? And we, till we had sort of finished the whole thing, we couldn't make that recommendation, so it did become really focused in that last, you know, but just before Christmas, till when you got to the budget hearing, that it was very concentrated, and that was why there were all these machinations going on between the school board, the ABC, and the administration.
Uh, yeah, actually, I wanted to add to Tom's point, because as I was reading through, and I can't remember which one of these things I read through, and first of all, the part that I really liked about the ABC was just the improving the financial reporting and also the process of the budget. So like the mechanism of putting it through, making it work more efficiently, more transparently, I think that was really good. And it's good that we did get the two thousand and eleven and, I mean, the two reports.
Yeah, so you have the two years.
Because you could see the kind of the development of it.
Correct.
But again, like to jump on Tom's point, it was like somewhere in there, I saw that the superintendent and the board come together, I had written down November fifteenth, there was like this, uh, you presented the board and defended any changes that were kind of on it. And then the ABC didn't come till like December fifteenth, one month later. And it's like, it would seem to me that, that the ABC should be closer to that time. If you're gonna provide data on things to help us make decisions, it should probably come closer to the time than when you're explaining the budget, right?
I guess, well, if I can just give my, I've only been, this is my first year, I've never worked in Advisory Budget Committee before. Never had the need. And I mentioned earlier, sometimes boards bring committees because information that they want, they're not getting, so a committee is formed to get it. I believe that administratively, we are capable of reporting to the board and to the public what they want. Where we see Advisory Budget Committee very helpful is that extremely talented people who, uh, have, I mean, blow circles around us with charts and every other thing, you know, and they go on, and, and it's very useful to, uh, know what people want for information to help us communicate that. What I found difficult was that because the charge was so broad, we almost had a shadow board. It wasn't almost, it was a shadow board. And so it seemed to me that way, that one was waiting for another one to make a recommendation, it wasn't coming, and I could feel the, the frustration on this board, uh, that they were waiting for something to occur while that board didn't feel as it was their charge or their responsibility to do that. So there was some miscommunication that occurred in that process because the charges were so broad, right, so they said. And people worked very hard to try to, uh, present information and, uh, to this board. So, I mean, I go back to Tom's piece, to me, there, there ought to be specific, I mean, I think it would be helpful if we, uh, can be more specific about what aspects of the budget that we would want to get information, speed up the timeline so that those recommendations come way before the board adopts a budget, or the articles normally in December, so that you can have your, your public hearing, uh, in January. And, uh, I think through all that process, because there was expectations and occur, then some unexpected budget cuts came and, and, and it created a good amount of confusion, not only among us, working as a team, the public, and everything else. And, uh, so, uh, I, I think I, we cannot, uh, refrain from the responsibility of this board by law to know its budget and to make decisions about the budget. You are the elected officials. You need to vote and adopt your budget and know it and explain to the people. You can't abdicate that. And, but you can certainly call upon the wealth of, of knowledge and information from an advisor to, to give you advice regarding, uh, facilities, regarding certain type of staffing for programs, or they can do comparative studies. But yet, in event, what they're giving you is information, research, you've got to make that decision. It's not the Advisory Budget Committee, they can give you that, they could probably say, maybe they could advise, say, you need to look at this, uh, here's where you stand, but they're not the elected officials, you are. And, and I think we need to get back to this board, uh, really, uh, spending some time, uh, I mean, I heard from my administrators that they got confused to whom they were responding, okay? They, they came to me, I went through their budget line by line, then they reported to the board, and then they reported to the ABC, and then they came back to the board, and they said, well, who essentially are we reporting to? And, and so it became confusing for them. So I think it would be very helpful, and I, and, and just listening to, to Ann and some of the ABC members too, if they had a clear, clear charge, uh, it would make their work, uh, much more efficient.
Megan?
I agree with what Lisa. I felt, honestly, I felt there was a lot of redundancy. I felt as a board member, I was going to understand the budget in detail, that was my responsibility, and I knew there was a lot of similar activity occurring with the ABC. So I, I agree that, um, you know, I agree there's a pool of talent that could really help the board, and I look at the ABC in my mind as a, a group of individuals that are a resource for the board to help us, provide information, um, maybe give us another lens of a third part, somewhat of a third-party objective, uh, standpoint and help us make better, make good decisions. One of the things that I think that was done, um, by the ABC that was very specific and tangible that you just, I think Rob did on his own, was that, that calculator for the taxpayers to see what the impact of their taxes.
That's great.
That alone was, was very valuable and very, very specific. And I think, um, things that of that nature, and additional, you know, I look at, you know, Lee just mentioned this evening that we're gonna be looking at board budget goals as early as May.
Right.
That, that's very daunting, and, you know, my first question would be, okay, we need to look at enrollment and, and look at where we need to be in terms of that situation. So I could see a task somewhat coming up based upon that for the ABC. But I do not, I don't want to waste people's time, I think it's, it's, it's not, we don't, you know, we cannot waste administrative time, we can't waste your time, we can't waste our time doing redundant tasks. I, I think that, that we need to eliminate that. One other question I do have though is looking at the structure of the ABC, right now, there are three continuing members, is that correct?
There are three people that are right now were appointed, uh, just in the last year, so they would continue.
Right, so.
If, if you agree to the three-year terms and all that kind of thing.
So, um, do we have any insight about, you know, who's on the, besides those three people who are interested in continuing? I guess what I'm getting to is, you know, you have a, a group of people who have some experience doing this and some background knowledge that, you know, there's a learning curve, right?
Right, you spent two years learning, yeah.
Right, if we have to get six new people theoretically, that, that puts a whole different spin on this as well. So I just want to, I don't know if we are, you're prepared to talk about that this evening about, you know, individuals.
I am, but it's not, I wa, I didn't know whether you wanted to handle the charge first or the.
Well, I think.
A composition.
If we're getting a whole bunch of new leads, that might affect the charge. We have people who have some, you know, if we have to deal with a significant learning curve in terms of understanding, you know, the budget within the Oyster River context, that, that's a very, that, that would affect the type of work I'd want to charge.
Well, I'll go ahead and answer that question, because if you look at what you've got here for the three continuing members, Lisa Allison and it's Steve Woodruff, it's not Woodbury. Two members from Lee, and Phil Dollar, who actually is probably resigning from the committee, so that's another position that will not be continuing. And in my original, um, proposal to you, I mentioned who would be, um.
Right.
Who would be going off and that kind of thing at the end of the time, and. And there's nothing in the three-year open positions that you see listed there for the one-year term that all four of the continu-, of the members that would be going off the current ABC, I mean, I'm one, Tom's one, Dave's one, Rob is another, that would not be, you know, that our terms are up.
Right.
Basically, if we go back to, we self-appointed for two years. But it does nothing, it says that we couldn't reapply.
Right.
And Jen is the fifth one, by the way. So there's nothing to say that you can't guarantee, I have not gone around and said, well, we sort of did a hand raise, well, would you continue and that kind of thing? And some of us will and some of us won't. But it's not clear. So we would have to resubmit our applications to the, the chair of the committee to reapply for the ABC. And we could also, someone could also apply for the three-year terms. So of the continuing, of the five members that are currently on that have been there for, since the beginning, I don't know that, I can't guarantee that all five will reapply, but there certainly will be at least three that will reapply. So I can't, I mean, I don't want to be specific because I haven't, you know, asked the people even in the room that are here, for sure. We just did a little show of hands. So I can't really be specific, but I think once we get the structure just sort of defined, then it'll be clearer as to any of us that whether we're applying for, reapplying for a one-year term or for a three-year term. Krista?
Might I add, when this committee was originally created, we had set it up so that there would be, and I don't remember what the numbers are, I looked to see if I had the original on my computer, and it's on my computer at home, I have to get it transferred. But anyway, that we had, see if I remember this right, I know I'm going to be wrong, you know, we'll get a letter about it, but anyway. I think we had like two, or seven members.
I think there were seven members.
So it was three, three-year terms, two, two-year terms?
No, you didn't even define it that way.
We did, originally.
Well, it didn't come to us as defined.
No, well, and then the committee, when they got together, decided that no one wanted the one-year position.
Oh.
Because it wasn't worth investing the time in order to do a one-year position. And so they asked us, can we please do at least two years so that everybody can get their feet wet, understand the budget, and move on for another year so they feel like they have accomplished something? And the board agreed to allow them to do that. But then somewhere it got lost in translation that we wanted staggered terms, so that, we tried when we created this so that it, it would be like the school board, so that there would never be this like mass exodus of people off of the advisory budget committee, because then you're starting over. And it's not helpful for the board to start over. So I just wanted to make it known that we originally tried that, but nobody wanted to take the one-year term, so, which I, I mean, I get, so.
Except we did actually have several people that only had a one-year term, because either they had to move on or other things, so.
Yeah, and I would like to get back to that, because it's helpful.
It ended up that we had several one-year terms. Anne?
I'm a bit daunted too about Lee's desire for us to wrap ourselves around this budget in May. In order to do that, the, the things that I'm going to need, and I see the budget, advisory budget committee potentially assisting with this, is analyzing our enrollment and whatever the recommended staffing is, understanding the impact of state and federal funding of potentially new sped requirements, understanding the impact of potentially reduced state and federal funding, the impact of maintaining our facilities. I'm going to need to know all of that before I have any confidence in, in giving you a budget number. So I, I can only imagine that a advisory budget committee would be able to assist in some of these things, because that's a lot of information to gather.
I would love to see a committee, be it yours or some other.
I'm sorry, Marie, I can't receive.
I would love to see a committee, be it yours or some other, to take a look at some of what I call the sacred cows, guidance program, for instance, not to do it in a quick, we're going to cut, but to really look at compared to other districts. And to have the conversations with the community so that, maybe not this year, but the year after, the year after that, we make some changes, more or less, I don't know. Another sacred cow is fees for after-school or sports transportation, those kind of things. Those are what I call sacred cows, because every time I open my mouth and say, well, I get a lot of feedback on this. So as I say, said before, we're all good at listening, we're all good at spreading information, but we're not so good at the conversations that come up with the compromise. And that's what I'd love to see some committee take on.
There have been, those kind of discussions have been going on within the ABC, but it may be that we haven't agreed and so haven't come up with a specific recommendation unless you have a majority of us. So it's not as though we haven't had conversations about those sacred cows, but it is-
And with the community as well?
Only in terms of those people, not like we haven't had formal meetings with the community, our meetings are open, of course, so if we get representative from the community come to our meetings, which we've had a couple, but, but not in terms of a formal analysis or anything like, we have heard from the long-range planning committee, because that's how we got all our enrollment numbers, for example. Al?
You know, again, I think the process, you guys have done a great job of the reporting. One, I kind of circled right off the bat on your charges, may recommend process to communicate budget to the community. I mean, I'm not, I mean, the way, let's just look at how the budget went last fall, and it's like, it would be so nice to have all those pie charts and all that stuff.
Right.
When it, when the public is sitting there in that room and they have questions, I'd like to be able to say, oh, that's like pie chart fifteen over here, and I can explain like where all this money goes. So that when people come into that meeting, they can ask a question and we can give them a clear answer exactly where their money goes, why it goes there. You guys do, I mean, just the appendixes, I mean, that's, you guys are pros at that, and that would be helpful. Because what I don't want to have happen again is like that we go into a deliberative session and people, I mean, at the end, there was people, there was a lot of confusion about money added in and what's in and what's not in. That should never occur. It should be very clear, we say, this position is in, this position's not in, this is why it's in, and, and clearly communicate that with all the community. Because ultimately, we're going to have to put that budget before the community and they're going to have to vote for it. And the last budget passed by, what, about 350 votes? It's like, so we need to do a better job of explaining exactly why we do what we do. And you guys would be very helpful in allowing us to communicate that with the public, I think, by providing us with the statistics and the data that we can show.
Well, we've done it on paper, but we have not been asked to do the kind of level of presentation at that, the hearing.
We have to present the budget.
I know, but it's like, it's helpful for them to, I mean, if you look at those appendixes, the last, the, the data that's on there, it's nice when somebody asks a question like, why do we need this first grade teacher? If we can pull up that appendix and chart and show it, I mean, I know we're going to explain it, but if you can visually show it to somebody who's in the community, it's, it's beneficial. And again, if you look at those appendixes, you guys are doing a good job at it.
I mean, you can certainly, and I'm not proposing an absolute solution here, but there are other ways we can look at, way of communicating about the budget before that session, I suppose, in public forums or whatever, although that's defined to be the public forum when you review all that data to the public. So I don't know, whether you do it before then or whether the ABC becomes more part of the presentation, just even just in terms of doing the charts and having, certainly Rob would be the best person to explain it, but, you know, those charts vary depending on what we finally decide in the budget. He's always getting the, the numbers from Sue as we daily or monthly update them, so they do change a little bit every time. But, I mean, this is, this is all part of our trying to help the process of communication that we're working on.
I am mindful of the time, it's nine fifteen, and we have a lot of policies and other items that need to be addressed as well. I would suggest that we all take a break and think about what we want, I mean, we've had a lot of good discussion and a lot of good feedback, but I don't think we've gotten, come to a purpose where we can actually write a purpose and charge right now. I need to think about everything that's been said and figure out where I want it to go. Because I agree with you, and I agree that the charge is wide, and I thought it was too wide when we voted on it the first time, so, but we couldn't get to anything else. That was the only thing we could get to. So that's how it moved forward. But I would suggest that we table the action item A and B and think about it and then come back at our next meeting, maybe-
Postpone your meeting?
Yeah. To our next meeting and think, if, try to think of what we would like it to look like and what we would specifically like the budget committee to work on.
You would like to reschedule?
Yeah.
Is what you're saying, to the next meeting?
Would you put on the, do you want to put a motion to put it on, to postpone this agenda item?
No, it's not postponed since there is no motion.
Okay.
It's to reschedule.
We can do.
The only thing that I'm going to say is that's going to leave you with an empty ABC.
Well, I haven't heard them say they're not willing to fill the spots.
Right, no.
Are you willing to go ahead and approve the structure for the ABC?
Sure.
And, and in the meantime, reflect upon what you want for the specific charge and purpose?
Sure.
I'd also like to make some more different input in terms of what was defined by the committee and in terms of what you have on this piece of paper too.
I'd like to contribute a little bit of your body.
Tom is a member of the board, please. And the chairman.
I have nineteen years of experience on town and school statutory budget committees. Statutory budget committees are required to develop a budget. Our ABC is advisory and is not required to develop a budget. I have a lot of experience, I stepped aside because I wanted to see how the ABC would operate without my being the chair. And it operates very well, especially under Anne here. I suggest that you ask for volunteers to join the ABC for tours that have not been completed. I ask, I suggest that you ask those who volunteer how long they're willing to serve, and I suggest that it's your responsibility and right to define, you're on for two years, you're on for one year, you're on for three years, and stop all this conversation. With respect to the charge, as an individual resident, I do not recognize that there's anything that I can't look into in terms of public information having to do with the school finance situation. So I don't recognize limits. I mean, you can go and make a charge that says you can only look here, I'm not going to look only there, I'm going to look wherever I want. So I'm not particularly interested in how you define the charge. I thought it was nice. It's open, it's May, that's good. In terms of the scheduling, Anne was about to mention that we did provide inputs to you incrementally, not just December 31st. And that was requested, and we did our best to agree to that and fulfill it. So I don't see a need for a lot of discussion here. It's your right to define the terms. When I was on the, still am, on the long-range planning committee, I was there for three years and I kept going, and I finally said, am I still on? Oh, yeah, you were reappointed. Oh, okay, fine, thank you, I'm still there. And I don't know if it's five years or six years, but I'm still there. These appointments are not really very precise, it's not written by the law. So if you go ahead and exercise your prerogative to appoint me for three minutes or three years, and I accept, that's fine. And let's not argue about this scope. I think the budget committee was formed to provide more eyes with expertise on the budget, and to the extent that we can find things that are interesting, that are important, that can help you form the official budget, that's great. If you choose to ask us to look at curtain rods, that's great. But I like the openness of the charge, and as a citizen, I'm not going to accept a narrow charge for myself. If you say the budget committee can only look at this and this and this, then as the budget committee member, that's what I'll look at, but as an individual, I'll look wherever I want. And I think that's good.
Al?
I, I think that's great, but actually, we're charging you to come back with a report to help us do the budget, because that's our job. So you're free to look at anything, but, you know, we have very specific things we want you to look at, and that's what we're trying to do. You know, I, the problem that I see structurally is that the way it was set up, and I kind of wrote this down, is when you start moving into things like making recommendations about the math coach and class sizes and the library, those are academic areas where the, the superintendent and the, the administrative team, that's where their expertise is. And if, if we're going to have an ABC looking into those kind of things, then clearly we should have people with much more academic experience, not necessarily financial experience on there. I, it sets up, I think, a bad precedent, because technically, Lee can make recommendations about the budget, about what the classes are or the positions are, you can then come and make recommendations. And theoretically, then, the administrative team, I'm not saying that they would do it, but it like, it almost sets up a way that they could circumvent the superintendent and lobby the ABC then to lobby us. I just, I don't think that's a good structure. I think, you know, it may not happen, but it just is not a good way to do things, I don't think.
Anne?
I think that what's most important here is that we all accept that this requires trust, and that the people who volunteer to serve, that we imbue with them our trust. With regard to some of the positions Al just referred to, the ABC wasn't saying who to hire, not to hire, they were simply saying, based on your enrollment requirements and the children who were in the building, this is what you need to satisfy your current policies and what you don't need. And it wasn't based on individuals, it was based on numbers, if I remember correctly. So that's not overstepping their responsibility with regard to the superintendent defining how he's going to implement the educational mission. That is simply saying that you have a policy that says your class sizes should be this big, and with that in mind, you do or don't need this.
That's correct. We do not deal with policy, we do not deal with personnel, we deal with budget. And if the budget is spent on a per-student basis, then to that extent, we're aware of the number of students.
Right, but you did say like, let's not have two librarians at the middle school and the math coach. You did say we don't recommend the math coach. So those are two examples of personnel decisions, right?
We, we didn't say that specifically.
We said that we would look into other ways of having the coach a non-full-time position, right?
Right, just said non, we didn't say not, don't have a math coach. We just said another way of having one.
But, and then the librarian was like, well, I just have, you should have one, not two, right?
I don't remember the exact wording.
I supported the math coach for full-time.
But it was, you know, we disagreed.
Those are recommendations that came out.
Right.
There are, there are some requirements of the state, and then there are the choices you make in your own district based on what your philosophy is. So the ABC may have come back and said, we might, we might recommend this based on, these are what the requirements of the state are, with regard to, for instance, with administration, you by state law must have some of the administrators based on headcount. For every thousand kids, you must have one administrator. So falling back on that, when we're asking them to make, make recommendations to us so that we can make good decisions, they're not making judgment calls, they're simply relying on information that, that is legally binding and, and going from there.
Didn't we just reschedule this?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry to do this to you, that we have rescheduled these two items to-
You're not even going to discuss the terms of, okay.
Chair, as part of clarification, I believe then, under action item, you will consider the structure of the ABC?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and for May two, we will put this discussion back on, and board members will be prepared to make suggestions regarding the charge.
to make suggestions regarding the charge. Okay. And I also just will give you a preview, I've asked Sue for May 2, to kind of give you a scenario of, I feel that you need, you need to give the administrative team, the leadership team, direction in May, not in August, when I arrive to get a budget for Oc-, for October 4th or 5th. It's, 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 it's not the process, you need something earlier than that. And, so I've asked Sue to prepare some scenarios of what it might entail if the school department, you directed that it be a no-budget increase, or you directed this. There are different scenarios that you understand that even if there is a no-budget increase, there's a tremendous cost that must be absorbed inside. And the other thing is that in May, you will be receiving a report from Lisa Allison, she will come back and give you, the board, an update on what's happening with our enrollment, our projections. And I also had conversations about her to explain what are some of the demographics that are driving.
This is next time.
These numbers, yeah. So, it will feed into information regarding your setting a budget goal for us. And so, as you think about this, it might be well, because, you know, in the next two years, there's some tremendous, some big decisions are going to have to be made in the school system, if these numbers come to fruition, and I have no reason to believe that they won't. So, there's going to have to be some sort of tough decisions that are going to be made, and I believe that the ABC can be a wonderful resource, and knowing that individually, they can take the charge they want, but there may be some information that you need to help you make the tough decisions you need to make. And, and so, I would help you, ask you to think about that, what is it that it is? I mean, and you know that everything has come on the table, from outsourcing to, to, I don't know, you know, and, and I think in a free, open conversation, and with the tough decisions that are going to be made, all of these things are going to have to come out on the table, and, and have open, public conversations, and relative to our schooling, and what we want to maintain, and what it's going to take to do it.
Next meeting.
It'll be the next two meetings.
Yes.
That'll be May.
I'm trying to move forward on this meeting.
I just want to give you a preview of that, there's some, there's some stuff coming ahead in, in May.
Yes. Superintendent transition discussion, Megan. Or, or.
That was me.
Sorry.
While Dr. Morse is here, I, occurred to me that through our negotiations, I don't believe that we ever talked about a transition period, and whether that would be desirable to have, whether that would be desirable for Dr. Morse to have, or would be desirable for you, Leon, to pass the mantle, so to speak, on, on lots of projects you've been working on. So, I understand, I want to open up a discussion, and it can be brief, as to what your availability is, what Dr. Morse would like, and then what the board's willing to support.
Okay, I'm, I don't quite understand, you mean after my term, or before?
Correct, that your contract goes through the 20, the 30th of June, and his starts on the 1st of July, and, and is there any overlap between, are losing you, which will be a tearful moment, and, and Dr. Morse joining us?
I'm not going there.
I mean, many tears, I'm just.
I will, I will, I'll leave it up to, I know Jim is busy with his budget in Portland, and, and working with his transition, and I think I've tried to leave, I'm trying to leave the house in order, put it that way. And whatever he needs, I mean, we're in communication now, and there may be some other changes coming on board, but I'll leave it up to him. If he needs me later.
You'll be on Mount Katan.
That's, yes, I will be. But I, I, my sense right now is that he's quite, my sense right now, he's quite capable of coming in with the team that we have, and, and fulfilling, but I'm available if he needs to talk to me about different things, so.
So, I guess my question is, is that, is there, is there, are you available for, let's say, a week at the, at the inclusion of your contract, for us to pay you on a per diem basis?
I think so, but I don't think he's going to need that. I'll, I'll leave it up to him.
So, that gives me great comfort to know that, that you're available in the event that, that is something that would be desirable.
Okay.
And I guess then, the question is, is the board, with the, with the board's support, because that, there's a dollar figure attached to this. So, I guess I would make a motion that, that, that the board consider Dr. Morse's request for transition period of time to be defined.
I really don't think he's going to, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I haven't heard, maybe he needs to speak to this issue, he's here this evening, but, I don't know.
You might leave your desk dirty, and you need to stay.
No, I, I think that if he needs me to come in for, to help out on something, or give, provide information, I'm available to do that, and I don't think he needs any big formal procedure, but.
Well, it would be greatly appreciated to be able to tap into Lee's ear here, and tap into the transition work that he's been doing to create the stable environment. And I guess the other side of that coin is, I'm pretty sure Portland's going to ask the same thing of you, because they are doing their transition even later than you are. They still have yet to have their first formal interview. So, you know, if, if the board is willing to allow me to tap into Lee when I need it, I think that will work out great, and we'll just take, take track of his time and make sure he's compensated accordingly. But I will tell you that I will try really hard not to use him unless I absolutely need him, because he wants, he wants to be retired. But thank you so much for the offering, and the board.
So, did you saw move?
So, I guess I redact?
So, you never fully?
No.
There was a second answer. So, you're just going in, it's not said?
Gentleman's agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Approve FY14 budget calendar?
Prior to that, I, we need to approve the structures for the ABC.
We didn't?
You haven't approved that yet under action, it would be the.
I thought we rescheduled.
We did the charge.
Not the structure.
Well, I mean, because if, don't you guys end in May? So, if we don't approve the structure, technically, we can't afford another ABC, and the committee won't be there.
So, what you have for a structure would be, the motion would be to approve staggering three-year terms for nine members of the Oyster River Advisory Budget Committee commencing the following rotation. And you have three continuing members with Steve Woodruff, Phil Dollar, and Lisa Allison, and three open for one, and three for three years.
Do we have any applicants?
What I would do, if I could, is that I have included a posting that I would put on the web, advertising the positions, and asking people to apply. And you would be coming to the board for the May, or the nominations would come into you by, the request by May 9th, and at the May 16th board meeting, you would be presenting a slate to the board for adoption.
So moved.
Okay.
I moved, Al second.
Thank you. For nine members?
Let's not get into that.
Could it say for up to nine members, in case?
It says, on your thing, it says for three terms for nine members.
Yeah.
Could it be up to nine members?
It's up to you.
It says a maximum of nine members. So, it doesn't have to be nine, wasn't nine originally, but it's nine now.
Doesn't say?
No, it's actually eight now.
The committee composition says a maximum of five members and a ma-, or a minimum of, minimum of five members and a maximum of nine members, is what the committee composition says.
Mm-hmm. And we've always had seven, but, or eight, but, we've never got, quite gotten to nine. But that doesn't matter, so it should maybe say up to nine.
On this revised draft thing, it does not say anything but five to seven. It says nine.
Then you should say up to. I, I mean, I would think that it would want to match our compi-, our committee composition, because we hadn't have any discussion that that portion is incorrect. And that says, a minimum of five members and a maximum of nine. So, if, I would like it to say that. There you go.
Okay, who made the motion?
I did.
So, your motion is to?
So, I'm amending my motion to say that.
For up to?
Maximum of five members and a, or minimum, I keep saying it wrong, a minimum of five members and a maximum of nine members.
And, and you seconded?
No, Al did.
I'll second it, and you agree to that change?
I agree to that change.
I hate to ask, to have a fluctuating number, I mean, it seems like an odd committee. It seems like you should.
Well, it was to put, I can tell you why it's in there. It was originally a minimum of five members and a maximum of seven members, but we couldn't agree to seven members, so it became nine members. Are you catching the drift here? But anyway, the minimum of five members was because they felt, we felt as a board, that the committee couldn't function, it was too much work for less than five people. So, it, that's why it was like that.
So, the committee decides whether it's five or not?
No, the board decides.
You would like that.
John.
I was just going to say that I think it's important that the committee is whatever size it needs to be, but, you know, wording, we, we have that it's up to nine, I think it's really counterproductive to get caught up in one word in this, and we have a lot of policies left to read tonight, so I think we should vote, and then move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have your motion?
Right.
Although, I'm, this is like, very quick, I don't want to drag this out, but ideally you want nine, so it's like, you're just trying to put the word in case you only can get seven, like.
Right.
It's like, but ideally.
We just want an odd number.
Yeah, you want an odd number, because you've got to be able to pass something. Ideally, they'd like nine.
But, but we can't make people work on this.
No.
Okay, could we have a vote, please? A show of hands?
Is this on the amended or the original?
Amended.
The amended.
On the amendment first.
I think you need to make sure the names are corrected.
If you could read the motion again, please, so make sure everybody understands what these voted on.
Yes, the original motion was Krista Butt's move to approve staggering three terms for nine members of the Oyster River Cooperative School District Budget Committee, seconded by Al Howland. Krista Butt's move to amend her motion to say for a minimum of five members and a maximum of nine members, seconded by Al Howland.
Could we now have a vote on the main motion as amended?
Okay.
All in favor?
Sorry, I just want to, you mentioned that you're going to post this opening on our website, can we put it in newspaper?
Could.
That would be nice.
Could.
Get a broader advertisement, a lot of people may not see it on the website, is there?
Thank you, I was going to say that.
Okay, moving along.
May I just make one more correction? Because it has to be clear that we want representation from each community, and that's not in your original motion.
It's on the composition, though, it's on the charge.
The one that was adopted last summer?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean?
Which, if it's not amended, it's still adopted, so.
Okay, okay, I just want to be clear that we want at least one person from each community.
Thank you. Budget calendar. We don't have much time here. Al.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2014 budget calendar.
Second.
Moved by Al, seconded by Krista. Mr. Superintendent.
I just want to draw your attention to the fact that the budget calendar sets the first session for the deliberative session on February 5. It keeps it the way it was originally scheduled.
So, that's a weekday?
Yep, it's a Tuesday.
So, is this our only opportunity to move it to a Saturday?
I'm just, I am just making a point, that people have expressed for, I don't know, six months, the desire to change the date, and no one has brought it forward. So, I, so, we need to accept a budget calendar and presenting it to adopt, so if you, if people want to change the date, I guess they're going, I, I'm just trying to be clear as to what we're voting on, and if, and if there are individual board members who feel they want to change this date, then they need to make sure that the dates work and present to the board for change.
Ann, at our last meeting, when we looked at a calendar, I was told that it can be changed. We voted on a calendar, there was an asterisk saying, "This date can be changed," and we were told that, at that time, that's not when we are going to change it, that we would have to wait. So, I get, my question to you is, is this the moment, where we change it or don't change it? Because the reason it was important to me last time to change it was because we have a segment of our community that is elderly, and it, and the middle of the winter.
We know the arguments, the, I think the issue was, there was a member of the board that was supposed to check with the other communities to see if that date conflicted, and no one has done that.
I think the conflict was that, because Lee went to a deliberative session, and that last year was the first year that they had a need for that date, or there's a window of time legislatively that you have to set your, your deliberative session. So, you're limited by how many weekends there are. And everybody needs a one day, and then needs a snow day, so you have one weekend and the next weekend, so somewhere in here, again, I'm trying to represent my constituents, which consist of a significant amount of elderly people who can't come out on a snowy night in the middle of the winter, that during a Saturday morning, from 9:00 to 12:00, they might more safely make it to the deliberative session, and their vote matters as much as anybody else's vote does.
So, are you ready to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion, but I don't have the information you asked for.
That's my point.
So, why don't we table this until our next meeting?
Because we, why, don't all have a budget calendar?
No, I think, I think we should have a calendar.
Can I just add something?
Yes.
To that discussion? Lee set their deliberative session date in February, or at the end of January, because when we went to the, to the Lee meeting, which was in January, they didn't have a deliberative session date. Because we asked when it was, and they said, "I don't know." And I said, after, after everyone else left, because I'm still a tez-, a resident of Lee, I said, you know, "Just because it's your first deliberative session, you might want to check out the state guidelines on that, because you have to set that soon." And they did, and then they picked the night, which residents of Lee have been asking their deliberative session, town meeting, whatever you want to call it, as to what it was, to be moved to a Saturday, as long as I've lived in Lee, and I've lived in Lee for 15 years. So, they did it for the first time this year. So, you know, I'm not saying that if we don't, if we pick a Saturday, that'll ruin everybody's day, because they're not going to pick it till we pick it, so.
So, what does?
So, I make a motion to amend mine, to amend my origi-, is, do I do the original motion? You do. Okay, so you have to do it.
What am I?
No, you can.
The second.
I've lost, like, my.
If you want to amend it, amend to the second, if you don't want to amend it, don't amend it.
When?
What, the second is a Saturday?
Saturday before.
This is too confusing for me.
So, I'm just, are there, you know, I just, are there, I hear the pros for moving it to a Saturday, which I can understand, are there pros for keeping it on a Tuesday?
To, maybe to some people.
Yeah, I know, but, really, I mean, the elderly getting here on a Saturday morning.
I'm elderly, and I'll make it on a Tuesday. So, the motion is to adopt this?
Yes, as is.
And, seconded by?
Me.
By Krista, okay.
Did, excuse me, did no amendment now?
Nope.
No amendment, no.
Thank you.
Further discussion, hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please?
So, we're voting on it, as is?
Yes. Five in affirmative, any in the negative, and two in opposition, Ann and Krista. Thank you. Approve the school board committee assignments, like we did before.
Motion to approve the school board for any minute.
Second.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Tom. Further discussion, hearing none, could we have a show of hands? Thank you. Policies for second, second read. Replace existing BG board policy in BG slash I. Replace existing BG board policy in BG dash R.
I make a motion to approve the slate for second reading, replacing BG with BGR, BG, BGA, BGB, BGC, and KB.
Moved by Krista.
Second.
Seconded by Al, I saw him first. Discussion? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. Policies for first reading. Wellness, school board officers, list of existing policies for deletion, and list of existing policies for code changes. Krista?
I overwhelmingly recommend policy JLCF wellness for approval at first read.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Al. Discussion?
I just want to add that I thought it was just a great, you know, the committee did a great job. I agree with that.
Thank you. Further discussion, Krista?
Just one thing. I just, the wellness committee had mentioned that they are still working on the policy and that they want to vet it with other groups such as the PTOs and groups that haven't necessarily been vetted, and I would encourage them to do that prior to second read.
Great. Further? Could I have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. Motion passes. List of existing policies.
One more. Motion to approve BDB school board officers.
Yes, that's what I said, wasn't it?
Yep. I heard you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, moved by Al.
Second.
And seconded by?
Me.
Krista. Discussion? Megan?
The job descriptions, is that going to somehow be included as like a, an R policy or a backup or something?
For secretary?
Yeah. For, not for secretary, for like the treasurer and, and all these things that you just recently have developed.
I haven't included, they're part of the.
Wait, we have a motion there on school board officers.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Right. That's what I'm, I'm asking about, whether or not we're going to include the verbiage that Lee created to describe the roles, the responsibilities of these officers as a, I think it should be somewhere in the public domain. I don't know how to make it unless it's a policy or a dash R, and I'm asking if we might want to do that.
I would be happy to include it as an R if you want.
Makes sense.
But it's included in our packet of, we have a, I can do that.
But, I mean, my point is, in the future.
I can do that.
People are going to go back and look at the packets.
Yep, thank you.
They're going to need the R.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Further discussion? Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. List of existing policies for deletion.
Motion to approve the slate, and I'm not going to read them, for deletion.
Moved by Krista.
Second.
Seconded by Tom. Discussion?
I believe that we should table deleting, which means that the motion doesn't work, policy KFB for further discussion. The reference is that that policy is found in policy IGA, and in fact, none of this language exists in policy IGA. And the contents of this policy directly correlates with the content in the policy we just approved for second read, KB, Title I, Parents, et cetera, et cetera. I think it was Section C. The same language is found in that policy as is being deleted here, and again, this, this language does not exist anywhere in IGA. It may exist someplace else. But the reference is that it was replaced by IGA, and it's not covered there. So I would like to amend the motion, or whoever tipped the motion can amend the motion, to further discuss this policy, because what's con, what's contained within this policy is critical information for parents to have on a regular basis. It defines the curriculum that's being taught to children and the availability of that curriculum to parents at their request. So I.
So your amendment is to approve the list of policies for deletion except for KFB?
That's correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Well, she, yeah, that's fine. I'll amend the motion to do that.
Well.
Because I amended it. I made the motion, so don't know I have to amend it.
No.
Okay, that's fine, then I'll second it.
Okay. Minus, and.
You're welcome.
Krista. Could we have a show of hands on the amendment? All in favor? The motion is amended. Seven in the affirmative. List of existing policies for code changes.
Can I ask a question? So what is the next step now with this, that you just brought up?
Well, I will just leave it in, and it will be, remain in and be reviewed by the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and there'll be a report coming back.
Okay.
And then it'll go through the policy committee that you approved, and you can go and re-review it again.
Okay. Thank you.
List of existing policies for code changes.
I make a motion to recommend, to provide the following code changes for the slate. Am I reading them?
Second.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Tom. Discussion? Yes.
I just want to say that for those of you who don't know what code changes are, the New Hampshire School Board Association, and I'm not exactly sure why this happens, but recommends code changes because new policies come out that use the same code as the ones that we previously had, or they have to move to a different code. So code changes happen, happen quite often, more often than I personally like to see them happen, because it gets really confusing. And a lot of the times, we don't figure out that we need a code change until we try to amend the policy and we realize that it doesn't have the right number on it. So that's why the, the need for code changes is.
Thank you. Yeah.
I, I take no issue with the code change. I, I do have issue with some of these policies and would like to know when do we expect to review them? For instance, the, the first one, AD, which is being changed from educational program to philosophy of the school district, has not been reviewed since 1997. And in fact, the, the New Hampshire School Board Association, the language contained within their policy, AD, consists of two sentences. And they read, "The board will develop a mission statement for the district. The board should review and revise the statement annually." Now, it's only in our policy, which is recommended, it's not a P, which is a priority. However, that's the language that they recommend, and it in no way relates to what we have in our policy. And in fact, it says that the, this mission statement should be reviewed annually. So my first question is, and I don't expect the answer today, is.
I'll give you one today.
When, when will we, when will we get to this very important policy, although it's not a priority, it's only recommended?
I think you understand the difficulty we had here, and all I'm trying to do is create a structure for the work to occur, okay?
I understand.
You understand what I'm trying to do?
No, I, I just think that the rest of us.
So, so I did not change any of the language that was in those policies, knowing how this board loves to wordsmith and, and look at every word and go through. So I want to allow you to have that pleasure next year. So what I just did was to try to give you a code so you could compare what the New Hampshire School Boards Association wants and what you presently have. So I assume that we probably have something come back to you in early summer from the New Hampshire School Boards. And then I have developed a three-year review cycle, if you recall, where all these policies will be reviewed. And as you see, the number of them, it's probably take you three years.
I take offense to your comment that what's only important to me is wordsmithing, and in fact.
Well, do you know what I'm just saying?
In fact, in fact, it's, it's really the content of the policy that's important to me, and that the language is, could be in French, which you could read just fine, and that would be fine with me, too. But I, I'm concerned that we still have policies that date back to 1971 and 1997 that have not been reviewed, and are, and I consider them to be critical to the mission of our district to have policies that direct us, that need to be reviewed, and, and aren't. So.
This is why, yeah, but this is why I'm doing this and trying to present.
I appreciate that, and I'm not.
A structure and a cycle.
I'm not criticizing that.
And I didn't want to take the liberty of changing any of the wording until you had a chance to review it.
Thank you.
That's all. We're on the same wavelength.
We're on the, exactly the same wavelength.
Megan?
I think one thing that would be helpful especially is to know what policies are required by law and which ones aren't.
I gave you a list, I think, last board meeting.
You did? Okay.
And I reviewed, I said, here are all the policies required by law. We were missing one, I put it in, I should remember.
Okay, but I think on this, on this spreadsheet, I don't, it would be helpful. I, I can look at it myself, that's fine. I mean, I just look at all this, and I think, okay, are there any that are, you know, like, I, I don't know, this one that you just mentioned, is that requ, you said that's not required by law?
Recommended.
But if it was, and it was, you know, 10 years old or whatever, then it, it does raise concerns. That's all.
I think this is what the policy committee will have to start reading.
Right, well, you know, that's what I. I think what Megan means is that within, on our website, where we have all of our policies listed, there's this, there is coding, and it's, it's RPO. Our R is recommended, P is priority, and O is optional. And it would be nice if on our policy, in our, on our website, we said, what kind of policy is this policy? Just a reference on the document even for our constituents to see that this is something this district considers as important enough to have as a policy, while it's not, it's not a priority policy by, by the New Hampshire School Board Association, it is important to this district. That distinction would be, would be valuable. I agree with you, Megan. It's not just what the New Hampshire School Board Association. Bless you. Bless you. It's what the law says. The law says. You know, like, the wellness committee, that is, we need to have that policy. Correct.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote?
Mm-hmm.
Show of hands, please. Seven in the affirmative. Robotics.
Yes. Probably Tom, I mean, Tom. Todd can speak to this issue about the team's request that came in.
As you know, the, our robotics team is a relatively new entity, and they haven't fully gotten the handle for the entire cycle of this, this, the competitive opportunities. I mean, the peak of the season was the, the major competition they did back in March. However, they've now discovered that there are a number of off-season opportunities to kind of keep going, and this one came up sort of last minute. Last minute in that generally was, we, we prefer to make overnight field trip requests 30 days or more in advance. But it's May 9th and 10th. It's at Worcester Polytech, which is the same place they went to the last time. It's a fairly substantial, it's like 50, 50 schools that are going to be there. It gives them another opportunity to get, take them, take the equipment out and, and compete. So, so anyway, so that's, that's, that's why it came in late. Questions or?
Krista?
Motion to approve the overnight field trip for the robots.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Al. Discussion?
Just. Anyway, Todd, you did a very good job explaining it. I just can't read what the instructional objective is on the form. I just wanted to be able to read it.
I, I actually didn't fill out the form, so I.
Yeah, that's okay. I just.
I'd be happy to. Give me a minute, I can find it.
Just for, if anyone at home was looking at this, they wouldn't be able to.
Can you read this?
I don't know. Something application engineering programming robot to compete against others. Sounds good. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I don't know what that, I can't read, I don't know what that means. That's fine. I mean, you explained it, I just.
Yes, it's, basically, again, it's, it's an opportunity for the team to, to continue using the robot that they spent the last six months getting ready and, and giving some more competition, so, exciting opportunity.
Good. Further discussion? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Wait, I just need that.
Agenda planning, setting review of future agenda.
Following up on your thoughts earlier, you referenced what you thought should have been incorporated or was hopefully inclusive in our wellness policy, which was drug and alcohol programs. So if, if this is something that Lee feels is, is possible, I would appreciate a presentation on what programming we currently have going on in our school with regard to drug and alcohol.
Prevention, abuse prevention.
And in what we are using, and maybe what's out there that are alternatives that we could consider. I, I appreciate there's a financial impact for some of these programs, although I think that the, the safety that is a consequence is far outweighs whatever the cost of a program might be. So I'd like to add that to agenda in the near future if possible.
Can I say something? I think sometimes when we have these presentations, it would help me if it was in writing and we just assumed we could all read, and read it, and then have questions, so that we, I think we could use our time more efficiently than have, you know, it just seems to me where it's five after 10.
This is early.
I know, I'm a rookie at this, but it does, it does seem to me that we could read things and know, get information, and then if somebody had questions after the reading, we could do that and save for ourselves some time.
Chris? Anything else? Future meeting dates. We have right there, non-public session, we don't need it.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Al. And on the unanimous hand raising, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.